I'd like to call to order the regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council for April 17, 2018. Roll call, please.
Botchway.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. I'm going to say something I've said for the last four meetings. Spring is coming. It is, honestly. It's out there somewhere.
I think you've jinxed us.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Item two, Student Leadership Awards from Hoover Elementary. I wonder if Trey Dervrich and Laraya Neteleke could come forward? Look at this thing. It's quite a microphone, isn't it? Looks like I have something you should throw a long distance. Let me stand between you, okay? All right. So, you're both from Hoover, right? Hoover Elementary? Terrific school. Things are changing, though. All right. So, here's how we're going to do this. We're going to start with you, Trey. I'm going to ask you to read your really good statement. Yeah? And then, I'll ask you to read yours, Laraya. Yeah? And then, when it's all done, I'm going to read... Well, I can't open this up. So, I'll open this up and read your award statement. And it's identical for both of you, except, you know, your name is on your award and Trey's is on his. Okay? So, you're first, Trey.
Okay.
I can hold it.
Okay. Hello, my name is Trey in I-10 Hoover Elementary. Some things I do in service are help my dad with our business and other stuff with him. I've helped at the soup kitchen in the past. I'm a member of my school's safety patrol. I've also completed all of my homework on time for the whole year. I still behave well in school, as well as everything else. For this final bit, I just wanted to say thank you to my dad, Mr. Kozier, and my mom for helping me receive this award, and of course, the city council for making this possible.
All right. Great. So, Trey, my father owned a construction company when I was younger, and I can remember working for him, for his company, just like you described. I wasn't so good at it. Yeah, I don't know, for whatever reason, you know? I remember one day when it was really hot and really humid, and my job was to throw wood, trash wood, on a fire. It was like 99 degrees and 98 percent humidity. Ah! I didn't like that at all. Anyhow, keep up the good work. Okay, Laraya?
I think I was chosen for the city council's additions award because of my activities I participate in, such as 4-H, future problem solvers, safety patrol, and doing many community service projects around the Iowa City area. I do this because in the beginning of 2016, I set a goal to be more helpful around the community, whether it be picking up trash in a local playground or serving thousands of Special Olympians in the midwinter tournaments. I like doing it because it makes myself confident and helps people in need.
All right. Bravo. Page. Could you hold that for me, please? Thanks. I'm just trying, having trouble opening this up. Okay, so this was... Remember, I said it's identical, but just Trey's on this one. So, Student Leadership Award for your outstanding qualities of leadership within Hoover Elementary, as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others. We recognize Trey Dervrich as an outstanding student leader. Your community is proud of you. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, April 2018. So, this is going to be yours, Trey. And Laraya? This is yours. Says exactly the same thing, except it has your name on it. Okay? So, help me congratulate Trey and Laraya for doing such great work. And bravo to the parents out there and everybody else who's helping Trey and Laraya become such terrific student leaders, and I'm sure things will go great in the future. Okay, here we go. We're off to our meeting now. We've got the rest of our council meeting. You can stay if you want. I don't know. Okay. Thanks. Here you go. Gotcha. Okay, item three is to consider adoption of the consent calendar as presented or amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Botchway. Discussion. I'd like to note that item three, E2, sets a... I think it's E2. Sets a May 1 public hearing and vote on an asphalt resurfacing project for Riverside Drive from Rocky Shore to Sturgis Corner. Improve the quality of that road a lot. And item three, E1, is a resolution setting a May 1 public hearing on an ordinance rezoning almost two acres at 1705 Prairie to Shane Road. So, people interested in that property should come on down to the public hearing. So, any further discussion? Hearing on. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item four, Community Comment. Anybody who would like to address any topic that's not on the formal meeting agenda, please feel free to come up and state your piece. Tell us whatever you'd like to tell us. Please don't take... Please indicate your name, and then take not more than five minutes to make your statement. Hi, Nick.
Nicholas Tyson, 1240 Estor Court. Just give me a sec.
Sure.
All right. So, in the ongoing series of my bi-weekly bummers, I would like to say good evening to the cowards of city council, every single one of you. I say "cowards" pointedly, actually, because I could really only come to one of two conclusions about your inactivity over these many months. One is that you're inordinately lazy. And you're not lazy, and I know that, because I've seen you devote an absurd amount of time to the windows on a gas station. So clearly, you're willing to actually get into the weeds on a particular issue. So then, the only conclusion that I can come to when it comes to the issue of housing is that you're in fact just cowards. C-O-W-A-R-D-S, in case I'm not understood. Now, the reason why I say this is because I have heard several of you, on various occasions, spout some of the most dunder-headed right-wing talking points when it comes to the issue of housing that it really kind of boggles the mind. I'm not going to recite those. And seeing as you're unwilling to generally get into the weeds on this issue, I will say that you really only need to understand three things. So when it comes to public housing, and that's really what you should be building, public housing, you need to know these three things. First, where will you get the money from? Interestingly enough, because we live in Iowa City and because you have maintained your precious AAA bond rating, actually, the money is a non-issue. You have over $200 million of unused borrowing capacity. And you don't need a referendum, you don't need to send it to the people. Four of you just have to have the guts to actually do something. So that's item one. But, the obvious objection to taking out so much debt is, well, Nicholas, how are we going to service this debt? I have a couple of ideas. The most rational idea is to actually just have a progressive property tax, but since you guys generally answer to developers, landlords, and business interests, that's just never going to happen. So, the alternative is that you could actually just not lower property taxes every single year for the past seven years. That's an idea. I mean, your own city manager tells you that you actually face a possible budget shortfall because of the possibility that the state won't give you your annual backfill. So what do you do? Hmm, let's lower taxes. That sounds like a really great idea. So, that's how you service the debt. There actually are a whole slew of things that you could do to service the debt. You could pass ordinances to extract funds from the university, like they do in Syracuse. There's a whole bunch of different things you could do. So that's two things. The third thing, and this is a very serious issue, is, well, okay, where will you get the land? Johnson County actually has the most expensive land costs in the entire state. That's a serious issue. Well, it's a really good thing that you actually have the power of eminent domain, then. All you have to do is condemn a piece of land, condemn a property, city manager and staff could do it for you, and then you can actually purchase that land at an extremely low rate. But again, unlikely to happen. And, this pains me to say, because I actually like at least two of you, at least. But when I say "cowards," I mean all of you. I mean every single one of you. It doesn't matter if you voice objections to particular things, to particular policies, if you then vote for them. Your objections don't matter. If there's zoning that basically creates a lot of market rate housing for rich people, and you're like, hmm, well, maybe we shouldn't be doing this, then vote against it. Grow a pair. Sorry, that's a bit sexist. Grow something. Grow a spine. Stop being cowards. Because the thing is, your city staff isn't going to do it for you. In fact, your city staff is probably going to work against you. Good example of this. In 2016, when, let's just say, a city manager, we won't name any names, was working with representatives from CWJ to deal with the displacement issue at Forest View, one of the ideas that was suggested by the Forest View residents and by representatives from CWJ was to actually use general obligation bond debt to build housing for the people who were going to be displaced. Now, apparently, at that meeting, it was spoken of favorably, so much so that Rafael then went to the residents and told them, hey, this is a real thing that could possibly happen. And then, when that statement was made to the residents, a city manager, again, who shall remain nameless, chose, took it upon himself to find the first reporter that he could to basically shame Rafael for doing this, basically making him look like a fool, like an idiot. Great job. So, basically, what I'm trying to say is, you actually have the power in this situation. Stop just doing whatever your city staff tell you to do, and actually grow a spine, build the housing, deal with the housing crisis that exists in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Joseph. Evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm the evil Joseph Dobrian of 1015 Second Avenue. I refer the council to an op-ed piece that I wrote that appeared in the Press Citizen on the 11th of this month with regard to the parking ramps. I have discovered that quite recently, a change has been instituted by which, if you have not been there for an hour, thus not incurring a charge, you are deprived of the 15-minute grace period to get out of there. So that, you put your ticket in the machine, it says, "Ticket is paid." You say, "Oh, good. I made the effort to get in under an hour and it paid off." Then you get to the gate, and no, no, they shake you down for another dollar because in between your ticketing... inserting the ticket into the machine and you're actually leaving, although it was maybe three or four minutes, you've gone over the hour. You don't get the grace period unless you have incurred at least a dollar's charge. Now, I don't know if this is a bug in the system, or if this is an act of bad faith. I'm not sure. But, it occurs to me that this is going to fall heaviest on the people least able to afford it. Most people are not going to miss the odd dollar here and there, although they are going to be perturbed by being surprised with a dollar charge after they had been told that the ticket is paid. But, there are people in this town to whom every dollar comes hard, and a use tax like this is going to fall hardest on them. In many cases, perhaps, they will be old people, or people who are otherwise a little bit slow-moving, and they need every minute to get out of the parking lot, especially at times of heavy traffic, heavy outgoing traffic, when delays are inevitable. So I call upon the city council to remedy this situation and restore the 15-minute grace period to those who have not yet incurred a parking charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will turn to item five, Planning and Zoning Matters. Item 5A, rezoning 225 Prentice Street. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 1.1 acres of property located at 225 and 225 and 1/2 Prentice Street, from intensive commercial CI-1 to riverfront crossings, central crossings, RFC CX. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening, Bob.
This is Bob Miklow, Department of Neighborhood and Development Services. This property was most recently used for a plumbing supply in Showroom. The proposed rezoning will allow the property to be used for a mixture of commercial and residential uses. Just wanted to show you its location on Prentice Street with Ralston Creek adjacent on the east side. Here's an image of what the property currently looks like. And here is an image of the comprehensive plan, Riverfront Crossings master plan, that shows this general area, the idea being that the property would be redeveloped for residential uses, with Ralston Creek being developed as an amenity for open space for the area. The applicant has submitted a concept plan showing a residential building on the property with parking on the ground level. I would note that the property is within the flood plain, so the parking level will raise the residential aspects of the building out of the flood plain. The concept plan also shows the development of a pedestrian walkway system along Ralston Creek that would also provide direction to the west, to the alley, and therefore would provide access to this open space to the other apartment buildings that the same developer has built on this block or plans to build on this block. I would note that this is a very conceptual plan, that the actual landscaping and details in terms of street lighting will be reviewed by the design review committee at the time of building permit approval. The conditional zoning agreement that goes with this request includes the installation of the pedestrian street and also the improvement of the western half of Ralston Creek. That would include removing invasive trees, stabilizing the bank, and doing grading necessary for the pedestrian walkway. The application also includes a concept plan showing how a building on this site might comply with the Form-based Code if this rezoning is adopted. There are several more images in your packet, basically showing a three-story building with a step-back at the third floor, and then the corner element has a tower, which is allowed by the Form-based Code. The Form-based Code limits height in this area to four floors, with the possibility of an additional floor for a zoning bonus, if that's granted by the Form-based... or, excuse me, the Design Review Committee. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this plan at two meetings, and after the second meeting, when there were some changes made to the overall concept, the commission recommended approval of the rezoning, and staff recommends approval as well. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions for Bob?
What's the parking requirement here? My initial view is, there seems like there's a lot of spaces. Are those what are required by the zoning for this area?
Yes, it depends on the number of bedrooms, and we don't know that... we don't know the exact number of bedrooms, but I don't believe it's going to exceed greatly the minimum requirements. And I would note that it's interior to the building.
Bob, can you remind us, please, of what the affordable housing component of any zoning change in the Riverfront Crossings District is?
And there is a requirement that 10% of the units be affordable for a period of 10 years, and the conditional zoning agreement does address that that will be fulfilled at the time of site plan or building plan approval, and that affordable housing could be in the development, or it could be in another development in the area.
I have one other... thank you. I have one other question having to do with the pedestrian trail down by the creek. The image you showed from the Riverfront Crossings Plan, Riverfront Crossings District Plan, shows that trail, a trail like that, going, I guess, under the railroad? Yeah, is there any likelihood that's going to happen anytime soon?
Not with this particular proposal. I think that would be more of a long-term improvement, something that the city would probably have to act on, similar to what we're doing on Riverside Drive, where we're putting a trail through to connect the two... under the railroad embankment.
Yeah, okay. On a... thank you. On a peripheral point, Jeff, I'd like to note that I was down by the Maiden Lane Bridge several days ago and saw astonishing amounts of litter and trash on the banks. I hope we can do something about that. Any other questions for Bob? Thank you.
Don't pat yourselves on the back. 10% of a building that has about 50 units is five units. Congratulations. For 10 whole years, well, that gives 10 years for the building to accrue astronomically in value, so that way the city can continue to gentrify. So, congrats.
Just for the record, that was Nick Tyson speaking. Good evening, Kevin.
Can I page back on this? Sure. As you guys know, we've developed all three, this whole project here. I want to speak a little bit on affordable housing. The building on the bottom left sits in existence today. That's 602 Dubuque Street. If you guys driven by that, that was the building we completed. The building in the middle is 620. That's under construction currently and will be completed, you know, by August. The third building is 628, and what we've done is, we've partnered with the Housing Fellowship to turn that into an affordable housing building, the entire building. What exactly does that mean, the affordable housing? Let me finish. The Housing Fellowship was successful in getting their tax credits through the state, so they will manage the property, and, you know, the Housing Fellowship's a nonprofit group. So this project, we devoted that one whole building to work with those guys to provide affordable housing in this complex. That building will have 27 affordable units. I don't know the standards. Maybe somebody can speak a little bit more how the affordable is done with the Housing Fellowship, but I think it's even below some of the rents that the affordable... that the 10% rule would apply to. So I think that's... that was a big deal for us to work with those guys to provide that. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Like Bob says, we've tweaked the building to match the Riverfront Crossing design code. Obviously, the building that exists there today is not very attractive at all, and we think this will be a nice enhancement to the community and to the area. So happy to answer any questions.
Yes, speaking of the 10%, you just was talking about, like, how much is the AMI, like, the area median income, like, 80%? 60%? 30%?
I'm not entirely sure what the Housing Fellowship goes by. I know the standards for developers to provide. I believe you use a 60% rule of thumb with the rents for the one and two bedrooms. I'm pretty sure the Housing Fellowship is dramatically below that, is much less than that, for what their rates are. So this is a real win, I think, to have this building being done, right, as part of this project.
Jeff, do you know, is it 60% or...
Yeah, the Housing Fellowship project, that's the one that Mary Ann Dennis spoke to you about, and Tracy Akenbach has spoke to you about recently. That is a mix of income levels. It goes all the way down to 30% for some units, and I think, maybe there's some at the 60 or 80%, but it's a range, and there's also a couple market rate units in there. Going off memory, but I think it was a 30-some-odd unit building with about four market rates and then a range of affordability. But, when you tap into that Lytech program, which is what the Housing Fellowship was able to do, there are requirements that a certain percentage of those units get to a very low income level. So it goes well beyond what the inclusionary zoning ordinance would require.
So I bring that up because of the affordable issue and let you know, we are trying to do more than what is required by the zoning.
Sure. Any questions for Kevin?
Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin.
I am Charlie Eastham from 953 Canton Street in Iowa City. I just want to continue the discussion about affordable housing. The comments are right. The Housing Fellowship is developing the building that Kevin pointed out, and the income targeting ranges are 30, 40, and 50 or 60%. I can't remember exactly which. So some of the units will be low-priced. They will have rents in the $400 range, something like that. But I think Mr. Tyson is correct in saying that that's not enough, that not enough units for the entire... in comparison to the entire number of units that are in the Riverfront Crossing overall plan, as well as, does sound enough to meet the needs of the 1,400 or so unrelated residents in Iowa City that are now paying more than 30 to 50% of their income for their housing cost. So, I have been congratulating Mary Ann Dennis on the Housing Fellowship's success in financing this particular building, but I also think the council, you, need to be more assertive in getting the number of actually affordable units way above what we've been doing recently.
I thought there might be a fair number of people, other than five, to speak on this, so anyhow, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right. I need to ask the council if you are inclined to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to approve the rezoning.
Yes.
All right. So, I did... well, I did it in the wrong sequence, didn't I? Oh, well.
No harm done.
No harm done. Yeah, well, what would happen if harm was done? All right. So, could I have a motion, please, to get first consideration? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by Mims. Discussion.
Well, I've been reading the packet. There was quite a bit of discussion on this item that took place at Planning and Zoning, and I'd like to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for raising a number of issues, which I think has resulted in an improved project, particularly the interface with the Ralston Creek, which kind of spoke to what I mentioned in the work session about the importance of promoting real viable open space throughout the city, wherever we have the opportunity. And clearly, the master plan identified that, and it's good to see us following through on that. So I was supportive of the project.
All right. I'm not hearing anything, so I'll make a few comments. It was very clear in reading the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission's hearings or in discussion that the first meeting on February 15th, I guess, was pretty testy. And I want to acknowledge and thank Kevin for listening carefully to what the commissioners said and to revising the proposal. I think the revised version that you've presented to us, Kevin, is really way better than what was originally presented, and something that we can be proud of. So I want to acknowledge that and thank you for doing that. I also want to praise the commissioners for being so clear about their, that is, the plans and the codes' expectations. I think it probably was difficult for them to be that clear, but they were, and I admire that. I also want to say that I think it would be really terrific if we could get some help from the federal government with regard to dealing with the affordable housing challenges that we face in this country, because it's a really serious problem in major... in cities all over the country, and cities by themselves cannot deal with it. It's beyond our capacity, despite what Nick says. So I'd really like to get some help. So, I'd really like to get some help from the federal government, and I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon. Lastly, I would like to praise Nick Tyson for being so clear about his views. I think I'd probably phrase things differently.
I'd rather you actually use.
I think I probably would phrase things differently than Nick did, but I praise him for doing it. And beyond that, I would strongly recommend that anybody who has strong views like Nick does run for city council. You always have an opportunity to influence decisions on this council by being on the council instead of just speaking to the council. So, anyhow, with that, any further discussion? Hearing non, roll call, please.
I just want to say something. Yeah. I'm not voting against this. I'm supporting it, but I really want to say something that we're really, as a council member, we can do a lot here without even help from the, I know that help from the federal is great, but here on this city, we can do a lot of things. We just, I will encourage the council member to really start changing the way that they're thinking about doing affordable housing. There is many ways, there is many people here experience, that have experience of doing affordable housing. We just need to, you know, have the courage to do that. And that's all I'm going to say. I'm not against this, but I will encourage everyone to think about this carefully.
Okay. Any further discussion? Pauline?
I just think that our council has come quite a ways over the last couple of years comparatively. I don't remember having followed councils in the past stress on affordable housing and putting into code such as even the riverfront crossings and the inclusionary zoning. That just wouldn't have happened, and it has happened, and now it is required, and I think it is at least a start, and that's what we can do.
Further discussion? Hearing non, roll call, please.
MEMS?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Botschway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 5B, rezoning 513 Riverside Drive. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 0.62 acres of land from community commercial CC2 Zone 2 Riverfront Crossings West Riverfront RFCWR Zone for property located at 513 South Riverside Drive. I'll open the public hearing. Hi, Bob. Again.
This property is located within the West Riverfront Subdistrict of the Riverfront Crossings District. It previously, excuse me, it previously contained a gas station and a convenience store. It's, it was, those buildings were recently removed from the property. The proposed riverfront crossing zone will allow this property to be developed with a mix of commercial and residential uses or just one of those uses. It could be all commercial or it could be all residential. The code requires that any new building on this site be built up close to the street or the sidewalks with parking located within the interior of the building or behind the building, not highly visible from the street. The goal is to create a more pedestrian-friendly urban environment in this location. There is a four-story height limit that applies in this area and the possibility of a bonus additional floor depending on achieving bonuses through some things such as masonry construction or additional affordable housing or additional open space, and those are all reviewed by the Design Review Committee. For residential building in this area, they, it will be required to provide 10 square feet of usable open space for each bedroom and also will be required to provide affordable housing according to the Riverfront Crossings zoning code. Given the significant increase in density that this development will bring to this corner, the applicant has agreed to a conditional zoning agreement that would dedicate right-of-way towards Riverside Drive. It would also close most of the curb cuts with one curb cut on Myrtle and the possibility of an exit only onto Riverside Drive. The addition of the right-of-way will allow the city to implement the plan for the improvement of this intersection and implementation of the Riverside Drive street scape project in the future. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning as has staff. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Bob, if there's an exit onto Riverside Drive, would it be a right-turn-only exit?
Right, that's correct.
Any other questions for Bob?
Are there going to be any sort of conceptual drawings of the proposed structure on this site?
There aren't included with this proposal. Any developer on the site will have to go through our Design Review Committee at the time of a building permit.
Is there anything else you wanted to say about that?
No.
Any other questions for Bob? Eleanor, I'll ask you this question. We went through this a year ago or something like that, didn't we? Yeah? And then the developer chose not to sign the conditional agreement at the time? What was?
The applicant requested deferral.
Yeah, right.
Had issues with the conditional zoning agreement and dedication of property.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay. Hearing no further discussion. Again, I need to ask you whether you are inclined to vote in accord with the Planning and Zoning Commission? Sorry?
The public hearing still open.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to, nobody else going to talk? I'm going to close the public hearing? Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm hearing both of you at the same time, so I can't.
No, I was just questioning if the public hearing was still open as Jim was asking where we were at on the views.
No, I just got the sequence wrong again. Okay. So, anyhow, I need to know whether you are inclined to vote in accord with it. Yeah, okay. So, I'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by MEMS, seconded by Botschway. Discussion.
I'm excited to see this intersection be improved, particularly the sidewalks. It's going to be great.
Well, getting a traffic light there is going to be a huge improvement, too.
Yeah. I wish we had some rendering of some kind with regard to the building itself. I thought we had one a year ago when we first looked at this, but I don't remember. It would have been in the packet if we did, wouldn't it? Anyhow.
I think all the information was included again in this packet.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Botschway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 5C, rezoning historic landmark designation 715 Park Road. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 715 Park Road from low-density single-family residential RS5 to RS5 with a historic preservation overlay RS5 slash OHP zone. I'll open the public hearing.
Yeah, next seven items are nominations for historic preservation overlay zones for landmark designations. Before I present each of those, I have some just general comments that pertain to the group as a whole. I'd like to keep those in mind as you, as we go down the agenda and work through each item. As you know, the comprehensive plan guides development of the city, but it also includes a historic preservation element that we work with and to identify areas that we want to preserve, including historic districts as well as individual landmarks. The Historic Preservation Commission enacts this plan or works towards it by doing studies of individual buildings and collections of buildings with the neighborhoods with the goal of gathering information to determine which ones really rise to the level of being landmarks or historic districts. The first step in the process to landmarking designation is a public hearing before the Historic Preservation Commission, and that occurred last year. The second step is a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that occurred earlier this year. Both of those commissions recommended approval of these, and now it's, the decision is yours as to whether the zoning ordinance protecting these buildings should apply. Once a property is designated as a landmark, any changes to the exterior that require a building permit will require approval by the Historic Preservation Commission or in most cases their staff. More routine things such as painting do not require a permit and therefore are not regulated. The designation also would bring some incentives. There are some zoning bonuses or variances that can be granted to historical landmarks. And then there are also some federal, state, and local tax incentives for landmarks, buildings, or investing in landmarks. Both the, as I noted, both of the commissions have recommended approval of these. And before we go into each one, I believe Generali Swain also has some general comments about landmarks.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Generali Swain, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. Iowa City has 47 local landmarks. Tonight, the commission is asking you to add seven more. This long list of landmarks has had additions now and then when an owner of a historic property requests landmarking. If the property met the criteria, then the commission has recommended designation to planning and zoning and to the council. That is the case with the first property we'll look at tonight on Park Road. Far more often, though, landmarking of a property has been sought proactively by the commission, and that is the case with six brick houses you'll look at tonight. After the loss of three brick cottages on South Dubuque, the council asked the commission to proactively identify historic buildings that should be protected. That's what we've done, and that's what we're presenting tonight, proactively before any perceived 11th hour while these houses are still in the hands of owners who have cared for them and care about them. The seven houses tonight all meet the required level of significance for historic landmarks. The six brick houses all lie in areas under some threat of development. The commission believes development and growth can be linked to and can draw upon our heritage and legacy, but only if those historic resources are still standing. We do not oppose change, but rather proactively ask for guided change regarding those things that we cannot replace or rebuild once they're gone, like an 1860 brick mason's house or an 1870s brewmaster's house or a 1917 pediatrician's house. Bulldozers and wrecking balls take a day to destroy what has stood for decades and decades and decades. Most of these houses were here before Iowa City's population even reached 8,000. There are tools available to assist owners of historic properties where applicable, federal and state tax credits, a county property tax exemption which we have begun to explore, and our new historic preservation fund. But one of the most basic tools, as you know, is landmarking, which is designed to protect historic resources in the first place and helps stabilize neighborhoods. Now is the time to pick up that tool and use it. The destiny of these seven houses is in your hands tonight. We thank the current owners of each one of these houses for their continued stewardship. This is a huge part of why the houses still stand and why they continue to serve as useful purposes. Tonight, however, is not about the owners but about the houses and how they have helped to find the character of this community and contribute to the common good and can play a role in our future prosperity and way of life. Bob will now introduce each individual house, and each will be voted on individually. This may make for a long meeting, but we believe that each house deserves its 15 minutes or more of fame. Thank you for your careful consideration and for your leadership.
Thank you, Generali.
715 Park Road is in the Manville Heights neighborhood. It's in the northwest district plan within our comprehensive plan and is currently zoned a low-density single-family. The comprehensive plan indicates that the surrounding neighborhood should be, continue to be, a single-family, and therefore this zoning designation is in compliance with that goal of the plan. The preservation plan or element of the comprehensive plan called for a study of the Manville Heights neighborhood to determine which properties were historic or are historic, and that study was done about, or completed about 10 years ago, and this was one of the properties that was identified as being eligible for the National Register of Historic Places and important in our history. And Generali will go into a little bit more details about the specific history of this house. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this landmark designation and determined that it does comply with the goals of the comprehensive plan for continued residential use and also the preservation element of the plan. Generali, review.
This is the Byfield House. It is not in an area vulnerable to development. After it was put on the register, the owner requested landmarking designation. Built in 1917, this is one of the younger houses tonight. It is a mere 101 years old. This house was part of the first wave of building in the Manville Heights neighborhood, developed by Burton Ranville. It's historically significant for its association with prominent citizens. It was built for the founding chair of the Pediatrics Department in the U of I College of Medicine, Dr. Albert Henry Byfield, and it was designed by an engineering professor, Stuart Hobbs Sims. This is a theme we see often in Manville Heights, properties that are associated with university faculty and staff. It's significant also for its architecture. It's a large-scale, well-preserved example that blends Tudor revival and English arts and crafts. In fact, a house in Biddenham, England, which appeared in an architectural plan book from 1912, may have inspired Professor Sims. Landmarking this house is a step towards recognizing Manville Heights as a historic neighborhood. It truly is. Thank you.
Thank you, Generali. Would anybody else like to address this particular proposal? All right. Seeing no one, are you folks inclined to vote in accord with the Planning and Zoning Commission in recommending approval? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. For a consideration? Second. Moved by Botschway, seconded by Thomas. I'm going to come to the motion to accept correspondence afterwards, right? That's okay, right? Okay. Discussion? I'm all for it. I remember seeing this when we put it on the register. Is that what it was, a year, year and a half ago or something like that? Yeah? Good. Glad to see it. Anybody else?
When you had the tour of historic homes, last fall, I believe it was, this was one of the homes, and I had the opportunity to tour this home, and it's just as beautiful inside as it is outside, but it's just very impressive and great for the Manville Heights area.
Any further discussion? Hearing non, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Botschway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 5D?
Jim?
Oh, yeah, the motion, which I just said I was going to. Hold on, hold on. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botschway, seconded by MEMS. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everybody. So, item 5D, rezoning historic landmark designation 1029 North Dodge Street. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 1029 North Dodge Street from medium-density single-family residential RS8 to RS8 with a historic preservation overlay RS8 slash OHP. I'll open the public hearing.
Aerial photograph shows the location of the property at the intersection of Prairie Duscheen and Dodge. There's residential development to the south, north, and east, or excuse me, to the east there's commercial development, the Hy-Vee and the Hilltop. The other areas is all residential. The comprehensive plan indicates that this area should continue to be residential, and The Planning and Zoning Commission and staff reviewed this application and recommend approval.
Thank you, Bob.
General Lee, again. Many Iowa Cityans have probably admired this house as a true architectural gem at the intersection of Dodge and Prairie de Chine. Fortunately, there's a stoplight there, so one has time to linger over the features. This house was built in 1893, and is today architecturally significant because it shows a transition between two major styles: Queen Anne and colonial revival. For example, the overall height and proportion, the three small ocular windows at the top and the spindle details all signal Queen Anne, whereas the arch-palladian window on the second floor is more colonial revival. Take a moment to look at this wonderful carving on the pediments over the porch and at the top gable. It's, all of these things are, we're very fortunate, these are all still intact. The house is in what's known today as the Schimmick neighborhood, but it was once called Tank Town because the municipal water tower was in 900 block of North Dodge, and it was originally a neighborhood of Bohemian and German immigrants, a major part of our local past. Thank you.
Thanks, General Lee. Anyone else want to address this topic?
Alicia Tremble, Friends of Historic Preservation. I kind of, since we're beginning on the brick houses, actually just want to address the importance of the brick houses and why they're coming up first. In 2014, which was two city councils ago now, during the cottages, the city council did give a clear directive to the commission that they were to identify districts as well as individual landmarks in the area. The HPC did begin a very arduous process of going through all the remaining properties that were considered critically endangered near downtown, and it took an incredible amount of time, and they went through hundreds and hundreds of property, properties I know because I was there. When deciding what properties to start with on the landmarking process, HPC looked at the danger to the structures due to their proximity to heavily developing areas and due to the overwhelming irreversible damage that can occur to the properties due to their building materials. Lack of education when taking care of brick buildings is devastating. Historic buildings are made of soft brick, a totally suitable building material if properly maintained. However, soft brick is much like a loaf of French bread. It has a hard crust, which protects a softer inside. Many brick buildings in Iowa City and across the country, across the world, have been devastated simply because they were power washed, which removes that hard crust. Further, soft bricks expand and contract with temperature and moisture. That means if a soft brick building is pointed or re-pointed with modern mortar, the bricks will expand and the hard new mortar will not. This means, under the force of the brick expanding, they'll eventually burst. That damage can occur from a simple error and can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars in damage. So, when the commission was looking at these, I think the brick buildings were picked first just simply because, as a historic landmark, you have access to a historic preservation planner who is trained as an architect and has all of the resources at her fingertips to help people, and I believe these were why you're seeing some of these properties as a first building before you tonight.
Thank you, Alicia. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, again, I want to ask you whether you're inclined to support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation? Yeah? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move first consideration.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Botchway. I'd like to start by thanking, I should have said this at the last, for the last building, but I want to thank the Historic Preservation Commission, including our Chair, General Lee, the Historic Preservation Staff, and Alicia Tremble for the really good, hard work they have done in bringing these buildings to our attention, but especially sorting through all those possible properties that Alicia just referred to and then, you know, coming to the, coming to us with these specific buildings. So, thanks so much for doing that. Regardless of how we vote, thank you for doing that. All right, further discussion? I drive by this, or will drive, ride my bike by it, or something pretty darn often, as I know you do.
So do I. It's a gorgeous building, and it was, you know, I was worried when they were widening Dodge Street about the preservation of this building and, you know, how much lawn was going to be left, and they, you can see they've put in a retaining wall, and it looks really nice. It's kind of close to the street, but still, it's nice, and it's a gorgeous building, and I'm glad that we're able to do this.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
We talk a lot about our gateway on Dubuque, but this really is another gateway to the city of Iowa City, and what I really love about this is you have all these modern structures, you have the new Hy-Vee, but then you have this, this sort of one of the very first symbols that you see as you enter, and I think it's a really great way to sort of commemorate this particular property.
This one is truly a landmark. It, I live on the north side, so I know it well, as well, and I feel like I've arrived home when I pass by this building. Really, truly a marker.
Yeah. I guess I'd like to say one other thing. You know, I'm trained as an urban planner, so in 1893, when this house was being built, the World's Colombian Exposition was being held in Chicago, which in some ways marked the start of urban planning as a profession. And, I mean, there's a long story associated with that, but still, it was an important event, and there were quite a few Iowa Cityans who hopped on the train, went to Chicago for the Colombian Exposition. So, I can imagine this building, you know, the mason, masonry people putting it together as other people were going off to have a good time in Chicago. All right, any further discussion? Hearing non, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Item 5E, rezoning historic landmark designation, 504 East Bloomington Street. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 504 East Bloomington from commercial office, CO1, to CO1 with a historic preservation overlay, CO1/OHPP. I'll open the public hearing.
This property is located in the north side neighborhood of the central planning district. As noted, it is a own commercial office, and it's currently used for office on the first floor with a couple of apartments on the, on the second floor. The comprehensive plan indicates that this is an appropriate use for the property. I might like to point out that landmark designation does not regulate the use of the property. That is still controlled by the underlying, underlying zoning, in this case, office. So, designation of the property will conform to the comprehensive goal, comprehensive plan goal of protecting historic buildings, as well as the central district plan goal of continued office use in this area, as well as the goal of providing a diversity of housing, including the smaller apartments that are located on the, on the second floor.
This is called the Hummer House, built by 1880, this Italianate brick house, which we'll show here in a moment. There it is. Has caught the public's eye for decades. The windows are gently arched, the front door has etched glass with a flat fanfare above, and when the lilacs and crabapples finally start to bloom, you'll really want to go for a walk by this house to see the brickwork detail up close. The house is significant for its Italianate architecture and also for its association with Helen and George Hummer. George owned Hummer Mercantile, selling food products, which later expanded into other parts of Iowa. You know, sometimes historians have to work hard to find the women behind historic homes in the 19th and early 20th century. George, for example, is listed on the building committee of the public library, his name appears in city directories and city histories. But if you look back to the 1870s deed for this lot, in fact, for most of the block, that's where you'll find the name of Helen Hummer, the sole owner. Thank you.
Thank you, General Lee. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I want to ask you if you are willing or interested, or, wrong verbs, inclined to vote in accord with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Memz, seconded by Botchway. Discussion?
Another gorgeous house.
Yeah.
I mean, it is interesting, as we go through these, and this is my neighborhood, but the image of Iowa City, the contribution these buildings make in terms of the memorability of this place is pretty remarkable.
Just reflects the character and the history of the community.
Yeah, I guess there are a couple of things I want to note. First, like John, I go by this building very, very often, but I've also attended many meetings inside the building, which makes me think about history and how history is continually evolving. So, the owner of this particular building, Jim LaRue, was chief of staff for the governor of the state of Iowa for four years, so that in itself is not a trivial thing. I mean, we're not, we're not approving Jim LaRue here, but we're, I just note that his occupancy and the way he and his wife have lived in that building have had a major effect on the fact that it is before us right now. All right, let's see, I close the public hearing? No, I haven't, have I closed the public hearing?
No.
There you go. All right, let's see, have I asked?
Oh, wait, you did. Yeah, you did in discussion. Sorry.
Thank you.
Moved for first consideration.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing non, roll call, please.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes. Motion carries, seven to zero. Item 5G, rezoning historic landmark designation, 504 East Bloomington Street. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 412 North Dubuque Street from high-density, multifamily residential, RM44, to RM44 with a historic preservation overlay, RM44/OHPP. I'll open the public hearing.
This property is also in the central planning district. The comprehensive plan for the area encourages the investment in older housing stock and the maintenance of a variety of housing in the neighborhood, including smaller homes or more modest houses such as this. So, the designation of this property at 412 Dubuque Street would help achieve those goals, as well as the goal of protecting historic properties.
So, now we come to a more modest, one-story brick cottage, built in the 1860s, and in preservation, the small, simple house can be as significant as a large, elaborate house. This house is associated with Sylvanus Johnson, who originally owned the property and is often cited as the first brickmaker in Iowa City. Also associated with David Bortz, who lived in this house, was a mason and later, a brick mason, and later a prominent builder. So, when we look to some of the large, elegant brick houses in Iowa City, we should remember that the people who owned the brickyards, made the bricks, and laid those bricks are also part of our rich, local story. This house is also significant because it represents early brick cottages in Iowa City of vanishing breed. There are very few remaining examples of this important type left. Thank you.
Thank you, General Lee. Would anybody else like to address this? Seeing no one, I'm going to ask you again. Are you inclined to support or the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation?
Yes.
All righty. Close the public hearing. Could have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by Thomas. Discussion?
I appreciate the, knowing about the beer.
Maybe we should drink a beer to it. Toast one. All right, no further discussion? Roll call, please.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes. Motion carries, seven to zero. Item 5G, rezoning historic landmark designation, 412 North Dubuque Street. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 412 North Dubuque Street from high-density, multifamily residential, RM44, to RM44 with a historic preservation overlay, RM44/OHPP. I'll open the public hearing.
This property is also in the central planning district. The comprehensive plan for the area encourages the investment in older housing stock and the maintenance of a variety of housing in the neighborhood, including smaller homes or more modest houses such as this. So, the designation of this property at 412 Dubuque Street would help achieve those goals, as well as the goal of protecting historic properties.
So, now we come to a more modest, one-story brick cottage, built in the 1860s, and in preservation, the small, simple house can be as significant as a large, elaborate house. This house is associated with Sylvanus Johnson, who originally owned the property and is often cited as the first brickmaker in Iowa City. Also associated with David Bortz, who lived in this house, was a mason and later, a brick mason, and later a prominent builder. So, when we look to some of the large, elegant brick houses in Iowa City, we should remember that the people who owned the brickyards, made the bricks, and laid those bricks are also part of our rich, local story. This house is also significant because it represents early brick cottages in Iowa City of vanishing breed. There are very few remaining examples of this important type left. Thank you.
Thank you, General Lee. Could I ask you a question, please? General Lee? Yeah. Yeah, so do we know where the brick came from?
The Happy Hollow was one brickyard. I believe that was probably where it was from. Nicholas Oaks had a brickyard where Longfellow is, right? Where Longfellow is. But I believe the first one was at Happy Hollow.
I kind of thought that was the answer, but I didn't know that for sure. Thank you.
Hence the word hollow.
Okay, and does anybody else like, want to address this topic? All right, seeing no one, are you folks inclined to support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could have a motion, please, for first consideration?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Memz, seconded by Botchway. Discussion?
I think this is really important for Dubuque. I mean, Dubuque obviously has a ton of development pressure on it, beautiful, simple, elegant structure, and I'm really pleased that we're able to preserve it.
Yeah, I agree. Any further discussion?
I would say it also kind of signals, I guess, I would say, a progression from...
So when we look to some of the large, elegant brickhouses in Iowa City, we should remember that the people who owned the brickyards, made the bricks, and laid those bricks are also part of our rich local story. This house is also significant because it represents early brick cottages in Iowa City of vanishing breed. There are very few remaining examples of this important type left. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenowey. Could I ask you a question, please? Jenowey? Yeah. Yeah, so do we know where the brick came from?
The Happy Hollow was one brickyard. I believe that was probably where it was from. Nicholas Oaks had a brickyard where Longfellow is, right? Where Longfellow is. But I believe the first one was at Happy Hollow.
I kind of thought that was the answer, but I didn't know that for sure. Thank you.
Hence the word hollow.
Okay, and does anybody else like want to address this topic? All right, seeing no one, are you folks inclined to support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, please, for first consideration?
Second.
Moved by Mims, second by Botchway. Discussion.
I think this is really important for Dubuque. I mean, Dubuque obviously has a ton of development pressure on it. Beautiful, simple, elegant structure, and I'm really pleased that we're able to preserve it.
Yeah, I agree. Any further discussion?
I would say it also kind of signals, I guess, I would say, a progression from, you know, a conversation we had a number of years ago around the cottages. And so I appreciate, you know, the fact that even though, you know, I think it was stated that this is somewhat of a simplistic home, that, you know, preserving something that has a historic character on a busy street.
Yeah, on that point, Kingsley, I'll pick up on what Jenowey said about David Borts being a brickmason and eventually a prominent Iowa City builder. If I read the text correctly, he built several Iowa City University and Public Buildings, including Calvin Hall. Yeah, which was moved across the street, when in 1910 or whatever the year it was when they moved it. Yeah, so he was quite active here, and it's pleasing that we can recall that by preserving this building as a landmark. Any further discussion?
Again, this is such an elegant, simple home. I'm really glad we were able to make this. Move this one.
All right, no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Rock Martin?
Yes?
Botchway?
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 5H, public, I'm sorry, rezoning historic landmark designation, 319 East Bloomington Street. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 319 East Bloomington Street from Central Business Service CB2 to CB2 with a historic preservation overlay CB2/OHPP. I'll open the public hearing.
This property is also located in the Central Planning District and the North Marketplace subarea of that district. As noted, it's zoned Central Business Service Zone. And again, the historic designation does not affect the use of the property. It can continue to be used as a commercial property. Like 213 Market Street, this property was specifically identified by the residents and business owners who participated in the North Side Planning Workshops as a key property to be protected. It possesses the scale and historic character that the community desires to preserve in this mixed-use neighborhood. Again, a goal of the comprehensive plan for this area is to preserve the lower scale and density compared to the downtown. The plan calls for limiting heights of buildings to two to three stories, and of course, the preservation of several of the historic buildings in the area. As noted, many of those buildings have already been designated, including the Haunted Bookshop, which shares a property line with this property. The Haunted Bookshop is on Gilbert Street, and it shares the alley property line with 319 Bloomington Street. The city has also made some zoning code amendments to help assure that new construction in this area will be of a lower scale. We changed the CB2 zoning district a few years ago from a 10-story building or allowing a 10-story building down to a 45-foot height limit, which could allow up to a four-story building. However, we also have a floor-area ratio of two, which means that, in most cases, the buildings in this neighborhood, according to the new CB2 zoning, would be limited to two- or three-story buildings. It would be possible to achieve a four-story building, but that would require a considerable amount of open space in order to stay within the FAR or the floor-area ratio of two. We are also considering a form-based code for this area, or we've done some research into that, and we'll be working with a consultant in the future possibly for the form-based code. I would note that designation of a landmark would not be in conflict with a form-based code. As we, as staff sees it, a form-based code, the intent would be to formalize the lower two-, three-, possibly four-story scale in this neighborhood. So when the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this, they found that it did meet the Central Planning District goals to preserve the unique character of the area at a scale that is a step down from downtown. You have received protest petitions from the property owner and some of the adjacent property owners. Therefore, approval of this rezoning would require six out of seven council votes. There is a state statute that does require a supermajority when the owner of a property or owners of 20% of nearby properties sign a protest petition.
Bob, if fewer than six are inclined to support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, then we have to offer a consult. Would that be true?
That's true.
All right.
So you would continue the public hearing?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Bob, before you sit down, I wonder if anybody has any questions for Bob? I do have one beyond the one I just asked. I thought I heard you say that the CB2 zone permits 10-story buildings?
It did at one time. As a result of our studies of this area, we amended the code several years ago to go down to a maximum of 45 feet or four stories. But that four stories is also combined with a floor-area ratio of two, which means if you cover the entire site, you can do a two-story building. If you cover half the site, you could do potentially a four-story building.
Fine. I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
Bob, I'm curious about the structure in the back. That is not, like, in the back of the photo there, that is not a historic structure. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's an addition. And the guidelines that the, if this was designated a landmark, the guidelines that the commission uses would allow much more flexibility for that portion of the property, could allow that portion to be removed and replaced.
What I'm wondering is...
It's the main structure that we're concerned about.
Is suppose we were to landmark it, and either the current landowner or a future landowner were to want to develop more intensely that back area, would, what kind of density bonus or benefits would they get to be able to enhance that back area? Are there any benefits that they would be able to get by reason of the landmark?
The zoning code does provide some zoning incentives for landmark properties. It allows the waiver or reduction of parking requirements. It allows, in some cases, a transfer of development rights, so if you're limited on the front of the property, you might be able to build taller in the back.
Including additional residential structures behind? I guess what I'm getting at is like...
That would be a possibility without actually seeing a...
Okay.
But that would at least be possible. It's hypothetical. But again, the goal is to preserve the original structure. It's certainly possible, under the commission's guidelines and the Secretary of Interior's standards, to add modern additions to historic buildings. There would be some design guidelines on how to do that, so that it's a compatible design.
Thanks, Bob.
This is the second brick house associated with Iowa City's 19th-century brewing industry and prominent citizens, in this case Conrad and Anna Graf. Conrad, Graf arrived from Germany in 1874 and was quickly offered a job at the Union Brewery. It was run by Simeon Hotz and Anton Geiger, whose house is a mere block away, already presented tonight. Graf must have done pretty well, because within a year, he had married the boss's daughter. They built this house in 1878-79. Eventually, the brewery would be owned by Graf, and there were three breweries within one block of each other on Market Street. Graf also played an important role in the 1884 Iowa City Beer Riots, which you might have read about in Little Village, and which gained national attention back then. It was a protest that may seem interesting and humorous now, but it was emblematic of the reoccurring and defining political fight in late 19th-century Iowa between Republicans and Democrats over prohibition. Graf also owned at one time or another much of what we know as the North Side Marketplace, and was in all-in-all a mover and a shaker. Their house is a more elaborate Italianate than the one owned by Mr. Geiger, the other brewer, the Wesley House. For example, there's more elaborate framing around the oval window, more elaborate arches over the second-story windows. This house has been part of our streetscape since 1879 and has been long admired by Iowa Cityans, and still is today, whether they are worshiping at St. Mary's, a local landmark, buying a book at the Haunted Bookshop, a local landmark, dining a devotee in a local landmark, getting a haircut, Ella James, in a local landmark, or just waiting for the newest marketplace restaurant to open soon, Goose Town Breakfast and Bar, also in a local landmark. 319 Bloomington is one with the scale and character of the marketplace, warm, inviting, historic, people-friendly qualities that North Siders and many more have said they value in this vibrant commercial and mixed-use area. The commission proactively identified this house as worthy of a landmark. We hope you agree.
Thank you, Jenowey. Anyone else want to address this?
Good evening, David.
Good evening.
Thank you. David Rust and Joyce Smith were the owners of the property. We're the property owners, I have a statement I'm going to read. We're the property owners at 319 Bloomington Street, a building that has operated as commercial office space for at least 50 years and which we purchased in 1999. We believe that historic preservation should be a significant consideration in community development. The historic nature of the North Side and Goose Town neighborhoods is an essential component of the neighborhood's continued vitality, and it is important to our friends and neighbors, many of whom, like us, have lived in the neighborhood for decades. After much consideration, we are asking you to vote no at this time on historic landmark designation for our property. We detailed our reasons for opposing that designation in an April 5 letter to the council. For those who may not have read our letter, I will briefly summarize. 319 Bloomington is on a block that will inevitably see redevelopment in the next decade. That redevelopment has already begun at the corner of Market and Lynn. Our property is adjoined to the south and west by two large parking lots, one of which is owned by the city. On the east, it adjoins two houses that are owned by Mercy Hospital. One of those houses is currently unoccupied. While we do not know what Mercy intends for those properties, it is a strong possibility that they will be sold and/or redeveloped. We oppose historic landmark designation at this time because the designation targets our small parcel and seeks to place permanent restriction on how the property may be used without regard to what development may occur around it. Because we are literally surrounded by unknowns, the designation asks us to bear an inordinate amount of risk, leaving us little flexibility about how we might position ourselves in that process. While the city is not responsible to protect our investment from risk, we think it is unfair to burden us with a zoning overlay that could make it difficult or impossible for us to recover our initial investment, no matter how diligently we maintain our property. Tonight, we want to suggest a path forward that considers both the interests of staunch supporters of historic preservation and our legitimate interests to protect our initial investment in this property. Reflecting on this process to date, it seems to us that an absence of trust is at the heart of the matter. We feel distrusted because our nearly 20-year history of preserving 319 Bloomington Street seems not enough to convince the most ardent preservationists that we will continue to do so. Jenowey stated that tonight is not about the owners, it is about the houses. But we ask you, where would these houses be without the investment and concern of the owners? On the other side, we feel unable to trust that the city or the council will have the resources or sustained interests to protect our legitimate interests in the long run. This is not due to an absence of good intent. Councilors come and go. Councilor's priorities change as a result of elections. Budgets are limited and may be shrinking. It has been suggested that if we would agree to the designation, the council will protect our interests through application of the zoning code. We are not so naive as to trust that. We do see a way forward that might be a catalyst for positive change. Some residents of the North Side have previously asked the city to resume and refine the 2008 comprehensive planning process for the North Side Marketplace, and especially this block. Such a process might bring together property owners and stakeholders from the neighborhood to envision future development for the entire block that is good for the property owners, the residents of the neighborhood, and the city as a whole. Some council members have suggested that form-based zoning might be a vehicle to achieve a desired outcome. We don't yet know enough about form-based zoning to have an opinion about this suggestion. We do know that any process must include property owners on the front end and give weight to their legitimate interests if it is to have any chance of success. Because of this dispute, we have begun to better know other property owners on the block. We are a diverse lot. We certainly don't always share the same views about historic preservation, zoning, or community development. What we all share is concern about the future of this neighborhood in which we have all invested. That investment of capital, and for many, decades of labor, deserves to be respected. We can imagine development in which 319 Bloomington could be a contributing historic structure. We can imagine a plan that protects the investment and the interests of property owners, pleases the neighbors, and contributes to the vitality of the neighborhood and the community. Should that kind of planning and the subsequent development that would make the plan a reality occur, we can imagine 319 Bloomington becoming a contributing historic structure. However, that is not where we stand today. Tonight, we urge you to vote no on the historic landmark designation at this time. We encourage you to facilitate a collaborative planning process for the North Side Marketplace that involves stakeholders, all stakeholders, and respects their legitimate interests. If that planning process results in further development of an historic streetscape on our block, the city can reconsider, and we might welcome an historic landmark designation at that time. And we'd be happy to any questions, answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David?
Okay, thank you.
David, there might be other questions later on, so. There might be other questions later on, so just hang around, where you would anyhow.
Okay, I'll just sort of shadow back.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Gilpin, and I'm representing my mother, Joan Gilpin, who's the owner of the property at 3/3 East Market Street.
Who is?
Which is also built on the side of a former brewery, if I'm not mistaken.
You said 3/3 East?
3/0 East Market. As I stated, I'm the property manager for that building at 3/3 East Market Street, and our family has owned that building since 1968. So that makes us one of the longest-tenured owners of that neighborhood. And we would also like to pose the request for the historic preservation to designate it as a historic landmark at this time, because we feel like the neighborhood has really changed dramatically in the last 50 years since we've been there, and also more drastically in the last 10 years since the last comprehensive plan was put in place. Just in the last few years, there's been three new buildings that I can think of that have been built. One where the coffee shop is, they're on the southeast corner of Lynn and Market Street. Also, the one that's on the southwest corner of Lynn and Bloomington Street, where there's a retail condo development presently, and now just with the recent breaking ground for the development of the former Pearson Drugstore. So there's a lot more pressure on development. We've been approached by several people over the years to sell our building and have resisted that pressure, because we want to maintain the character of the neighborhood and the retail mix and everything else that goes along with it, because I think those are all important to the character of the North Side neighborhood and Iowa City in general. One thing that concerns me is the, you know, Rock, you mentioned if they wanted to develop the back part of it, they could get exemptions for parking. And now I want to speak not necessarily so much to this particular property, but it illustrates what I think really needs to be done if we want to be proactive about this whole process, is that we need to have a plan in place before we go into it, rather than being reactionary when things... being reactionary when things happen that are not anticipated or whatever. And one of those things is parking. Because one of the tenants in our building is one of those restaurants, and then when you mentioned that there's going to be another restaurant going in and more new buildings that are going to have more people in them, if we're going to have retail and commercial and residential mix in the neighborhood, which I'm hearing a lot of is going to be happening, where are all of those patrons of those restaurants going to park? Because now the only parking available is on the Market Street lot, which is overutilized most of the time. And so I think some of those things need to be addressed before we really go forward. So I would act you to deny this request for the rezoning, or not for the rezoning, but for the designation at this time. And as Mr. Rust indicated, let's get together with the stakeholders in the neighborhood and say what's best for the neighborhood and what's best for Iowa City. And once that's determined and we have something in place, then let's address this historic landmark designation. Because if it's -- the designation is made now, it's going to be much more difficult to rescind it or do anything about it in the future. So I would rather see us have something in place before we go to that point and then address that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick.
Hello, it's Alicia Trimble with Friends of Historic Preservation, again. I just wanted to say before I begin here that I'm absolutely devastated to be standing up here. I never thought I would be opposing the historic landmarking process on the other side of Ms. Smith and Mr. Rust. And I want to apologize to the community and to the Council. I chose not to go to the P&amp;Z meeting where a lot of these issues came up. My dog had just passed away, and I knew, like the HPC, the P&amp;Z Commission would have to follow city code, and therefore these landmark properties would pass P&amp;Z. I decided I would not be a very good representative of Historic Preservation with a snotty nose and blood-shut eyes. Instead, it turns out that a lot of the questions that were raised during that meeting and because of that meeting, I think I could have helped answer, and I believe I could have helped assuage a number of fears that seem to have risen. The Council is now in the position of the dreaded supermajority, and I sincerely apologize. When this happens, it is awful for everyone, especially for all of you. No one is arguing Joyce Smith and David Rust are not great stewards of historic buildings. We know they are, we know we can trust them, HPC trusts them, Friends trusts them. I trust them, and I cannot say that about too many people who buy historic properties as commercial income properties. However, and I mean this with absolutely no respect, or no disrespect, we are just blips in Iowa City's history. This town was here before us, and it will be here after us. And it's about respecting those who came before us and the things they've done before us. It's also about the values of our community. And as my husband likes to say, "If the beer truck gets me," which is his euphemism for when tragedy occurs, "What happens if Joy and David pass away?" It's not supposed to be that way, it's not something we want to happen, and trust me, it's the last thing I want to happen because that house is going to be toast. But it's a reality of being human, we're all going to die. What happens if they sell the property? The house is currently protected, and no one expects anyone to keep an income property for their entire life. I think it's important to point out and to remind everyone in this room that demo permits in Iowa City only need to be present on a building for five days. If a demo permit is there on a Monday, this house could be torn down on a Saturday. This house is very important to Iowa City, not just because of its architecture, but because of the role it and its occupants played in Iowa City history, which Jenowey spoke a little bit about. I want to say a few other things that I should have said at the P&amp;Z meeting. First of all, is a little history on why and where this house was built. The house was not built in a -- excuse me, the house was not built in a residential neighborhood, and it was never meant to exist in a residential neighborhood. Behind this house, across the alley, sat a stinking noisy competitor's brewery. To its west sat an industrial shed the size of an entire lot, which was part of an even larger icehouse and bottling company that sat on the other side of the shed. Across the street, the Sanborn map notes, though it does not show that there were some dwellings, but it also says there were no less than five barns present on the block. Where the laundromat currently sits was a stable. And to the east of the property, for more than 20 years, sat vacant lots. And we know, it's very well documented, the vacant lots in Iowa, out west, as it was called back then, were usually overgrown with weeds higher than a person's head by the end of summer. For wealthy business owners of the 19th century, this was a very common place to build your business. You built it in the middle of your commercial holdings. Graff came to own that brewery, and before that, his father-in-law owned that brewery, so he had to be there in case of emergency. There were no cars, there were no phones, you needed to be near your property. He also came, as Jenowey said, to own much of the property around what we call the Northside Marketplace at one time or another. In this case, the house is actually more appropriate that it sits among commercial buildings and parking lots than in a residential neighborhood, because it was built to be among commercial and industrial buildings and among stables, which were the precursors to parking lots. Another concern that has been submitted to the Council is that the building is being preserved individually and not as an entire district. I would love a district here. Your Commission would love a district here. Your city code does not allow for a district here, unless maybe we do some crazy congressional mapping like Texas or something. But the fact is, a district has to be contiguous. Their city code's based on National Register expectations. This is the reason, as Jenowey said, the Union Brewery, the Economy Advertising Building, the Union Bakery, and the Jacob Wynn's House, all within a block of this house are also individually landmarked. Because of the former industrial nature of this area and lack of zoning overlays in this area, it's become potmarked, and the properties have to be individually landmarked to be saved. Another concern was that, and it's been brought up twice tonight, that is for planning to landmark buildings when an area is ripe for development. Because we have a former planning professor on our Council, as well as someone else who worked in a much larger planning department, I would be interested to hear your understanding of good planning and your discussion. My understanding is we protect what our history and culture value, we protect what our community values, we protect what draws people to our communities and draws people into our neighborhoods. Good development then occurs around the things we treasure. There's also been an argument that while it's legal for a community to protect its history and culture, designation of an individual property is unfair. I'm really struggling with this one to understand it in this particular case. Nothing about the functionality of the house will change. Ms. Smith and Mr. Russ also stated what seemed to be a concern in their letter, that the business in the house operated mainly out of the two nonhistoric additions, and somehow the designation might matter. The opposite is actually true. When a building is landmarked, strangely enough, those additions are strangely kind of protected. It's a common misunderstanding that historic preservation overlays force you to do anything. They don't force you to do a thing. And if Ms. Smith and Mr. Russ do want to remove those additions and replace them with better additions, they'll be able to do that as well. There's nothing in the Historic Preservation Guidelines that would prohibit that. As I always have to do too, I have to give my spiel. We don't operate in a void, we live in a community, we live in a society, and we are responsible and accountable to one another. The fact of the matter is that a loss of any historic building is a loss to our whole community. There is no one who looks at the Inglert Theater or the Carnegie Library, both slated for demolition at different times, and said Iowa City would be a better place without those buildings. No one looks at the corner of Lynn and Washington at that parking lot and says, "Wow, we're so much better off because we have a parking lot and not the historic City Hall." Thank you.
My name is Cecile Kinsley, I'm also on the Historic Preservation Commission. I want to pull away a little bit from this particular property and talk more generally about all seven of these. When I have family and friends come and visit from Chicago and Cleveland, invariably they comment on the wonderful diversity of architectural styles in this town. They say, "We don't have those in our town." We're all in this room tonight because we're proud to live in Iowa City, and I would argue that part of the reason we're proud to live in Iowa City is because of structures like these. By granting landmark designation to these seven properties, we're showing that we both value and want to preserve our past, as at the same time, we build our future, Riverfront Crossings, in very different styles.
Thank you, Cecile.
Hello everyone, my name is Susan Chalow.
Hi, Susan.
And I will sign here, just a second. I submitted an email to the Council last night, I'm going to read just portions of it, it's a little bit repetitive. I want to stay outright echoing you, Jim. I have such admiration for Historic Preservation. I grew up in an older home in Burlington that looked very much like this one, I live in historic district today. I value these houses greatly. I think my main objection to this designation is that it has to happen now. I would like us to just take a step back and think about some alternatives for this block. As I said in my letter, were we to move ahead, the most probable scenario, absent a real visioning for this block, a very important one, bounded by North Lynn, East Bloomington, North Gilbert, and East Market Streets, and without further input, 319 East Bloomington will be surrounded in the coming years by taller, bulkier, and visually uninteresting condo apartment buildings. It seems equally likely that the city too will ultimately decide to build something similar on its parking lot between George's Buffet and the Bluebird Cafe Riverside Theater Building. And of course, owners of the latter may give in to the would-be buyers as well, perhaps resulting in yet more monolithic condo apartment buildings in this precariously charming and historically significant part of town. Where will that leave 319? As a perpetual landmark? This red brick jewel will become a sore thumb, a lonely anachronism, completely at odds with its surroundings. Whether it remains a doctor's office as it is today, or is converted to some other commercial use, its property value could decline and its historic value might well follow suit. In this case, forever seems a long time indeed. Imagine an alternative scenario. Not designating 319 as historic landmark would provide, at this time, would provide more time to fully consider the highest and best use for the property and devise a more appropriate and aesthetically pleasing outcome for the block as a whole. The 319 East Bloomington structure has far more in common architecturally, with the older commercial buildings on Lynn Street, from Hamburg Inn to Oasis, as well as George's Buffet. What if any new structures built adjacent to 319 and elsewhere on this block, for example, were required to adopt historically appropriate facades, such as the apartments along the 600 block of East Washington Street facing College Green Park, thus creating more of the cohesive neighborhood feel recommended by many of the city's urban planning consultants? We've seen great documentation for the importance of this structure in Iowa City's history, but I believe that preserving a single building in perpetuity without a well-conceived plan for the use and appearance of surrounding properties with no similar protection sought for equally historic and much beloved buildings with which 319 shares this block, dishonors its history and jeopardizes its useful future. So I hope you will consider voting no at this time. Let's take our time and come back to historic designation later. Thank you.
Hi, Armin Poliay. I'm the owner of the parking lot next to 319 Bloomington. And we've been in this neighborhood a long time. Actually, we were at 127 South Clinton until urban renewal, and then tore down our building, and then we went up and rented from the Skarda family, Poliay's Pizza, at 302 East Bloomington. We don't own that building, but I'm here in support of the neighbors, Dave and Joey, to keep them in control of their property, and we feel they've done an excellent job. I previously owned that house, and it's not all historic because those two metal poles, I carved them out myself. And they're just good, generous supporters of the community, and we don't feel this should be designated on them at this time. And this particular property, I think it is about the property owner. We, and I'm not saying that we're going to want to put up some big building on the empty parking lot, we want to keep it fit with the Northside neighborhood, and if we do something, the only reason we have an empty lot is because we need it, we couldn't function without it, because the parking's so bad up there. But it is, we were, we've been through four downzonings on that property. We worked in, which I'm not complaining about that part of it, but now we're down to two and three. So tonight is about the property owner, when you designate them and they don't have control of their property. You people are actually, in a sense, doing, playing with their 401K and their investment when you make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Armin, how do you spell your first name?
A-R-M-O-N-D.
Hi, I'm Poliay Poliay. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I did want to bring up the point that we were approached for the parking lot in this interest of building a Nolte school. And I just, I love the idea that we have some kind of comprehensive plan for the Northside neighborhood, and said, it just kind of, I don't know where that's going, or they approached us, and we're not interested.
Well, we were approached by a city employee, and the city employee put up a high-rise dorm for a Nolte school, which I don't --
You know, there's some, I don't know if I have the facts right, it's just like, you kind of step back and say, okay, what's happening? So I would just, I would also recommend voting against this designation, and I love the idea of, I love our neighborhood. So we don't own our building that we are in presently, but we're now on third generation there, my son and daughter-in-law. So anyway, that's just, I like the idea of really looking at the Northside neighborhood with the Northside businesses in participation of that. Thank you.
Poliay, it's nice to see you, but do I understand, I just want to make sure I understand, the Poliay family does not own the building that the pizza place is in, right? But you do own the lot, right? The parking lot across the street, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Good evening. Linda McGuire, I live at 618 Ronald Street in the Northside. Generally, you would see me up here supporting historically progressive actions, but I really want to ask you to distinguish this one property. And you've heard reasons to do that, it's currently in great hands, but I'm asking you to also, I'm also asking you tonight to deny this at this time. And I'm doing that as a neighbor who, one of the founders of the Northside Neighborhood Association, because I'm asking you to continue a promise, or at least a process, that you started with us back in 2008, with the comprehensive, the plan that Bob talked about, has not been followed through. One of the provisions in that plan, one of the goals, was to adopt zoning regulations to ensure that new development is consistent with the existing Main Street commercial character of the area and compatible with surrounding residential neighborhoods. And I won't, you can read this yourself. We, in the last few years, many neighbors spent many of our hours meeting with city consultants specifically to talk about what was going to happen on this block. And as I understand, the idea was that we were going to look at a form-based code that would provide much of the same character that we're talking about here. And I understand, I could be wrong, that the consultant's report was one step in the process for that, but that financial -- process for that, but that financial considerations made it so that we could not go forward with a form-based code in our neighborhood. Now, I don't know much about what that process is, but I do think we have not, I don't want to say that we've not been operating good faith because that's not what I'm saying at all, but I'm disappointed, severely disappointed that we have had, all the buildings that were mentioned before go up, there's another one right now where the switching station used to be that's going up. We have the largest undeveloped amount of property around any of these others. So I'm asking you for good reason to deny this tonight at this time for, to give the opportunity to go back on the process of developing this form-based code, perhaps even with some little park, not parking, but a little park space there. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Congress.
Hey, the whole Northside neighborhood is going to be here pretty soon.
Hi, my name is Sherri DeGrae and I sit on the Historic Preservation Commission. And I think everyone loves this building and while I hear a message to hold back, it's not making sense to me. I think we're here tonight to preserve the building. If something were to happen, like Alicia said, it may not be revisited. So if you value the building, and so many people have said they do, I believe that you should vote in favor of landmarking the building. I could also point out that the Unitarian Church on the corner of Gilbert in Iowa was a successful partnership working with Jesse Allen and the building remains and there's a building that will be modern and new and it's, the two are coexisting, they will coexist. And I think that with that as a precedent, we could move forward if it were to happen that way with this stretch of Bloomington. And I think that the requests that people have made to do a form-based code is a great request to alert you all to do that. And the third point is, I used to live in the Poliay's building on the third floor and I came here in 1999 also. It was a professional job and I felt really proud to step out on the street and see the historic neighborhood and I would see the St. Mary's steeple, the building I lived in. And when I would turn the corner and saw this building, it was just gorgeous. And there's really nothing else like it when you're walking from the Northside in a southerly direction and you hit this area, there's no other pretty building like it. So if something were to happen and it didn't exist, we would lose a part of our culture and a true part of substance in Iowa City, so I hope you vote to pass it.
Thank you Sherri.
Okay, I don't see anyone else, so I will ask the question I've asked in the last six, after the last six public hearings. Are you inclined to vote in favor in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation?
No.
Jim, you had mentioned during the work session, you had some, something in mind, I believe, for this property in terms of the point we're at? Mistaken?
Yeah, you're right, I did. What I had in mind was the possibility of voting to, well, of continuing the public hearing to our next meeting and then voting that night on May 1st. That would give all of us an opportunity to process what we've heard, reflect on it, let it sink in, get an emotional sense of it as well as an intellectual sense of what we think should be done. And then vote as we think is appropriate. So that's what I was going to suggest, John. If there's interest in doing that, I would want to have a motion to defer. This would be the moment to do that, would it not?
It would be. I think you also need to figure out though if you need to have the consult with P&amp;Z. Otherwise, we get to May 1st and then you may then have to back up and...
All right, so we could have a tentative indication of whether people are inclined to support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, right? Susan's already said no. So my tentative inclination is yes. How about the rest of you?
Yes with the zoning, with the planning and zoning?
Yes, to support their recommendation that we approve this designation.
Well, I would just want to add before anyone else speaks, when I, you mentioned at the work session the idea of continuing it. I'm trying to find a way of identifying a middle ground if we can on this thing. And, you know, on the one hand, we have the beer truck scenario, which, you know, is, you know, we don't want to talk about it, but it is, it is sort of on the one extreme. I think, you know, staff, Bob, Bob has identified and described how he believes, how staff believes the existing zoning does not threaten the building in terms of the scale of future development. If we were to continue this, one reason I like that idea is that I would like some confirmation from staff by looking at that CB2 zoning with the existing conditions and if possible, within a, say, a two-week framework, confirm in fact that what Bob described is indeed the case, that with the constraint on the FAR, the parking requirements and so forth, that we can truly expect to see a two to three-story building development on that block. The bulk of the development to me is the main concern. I do not want to see, you know, what we saw across the street here on Washington. So I would feel more comfortable, if possible within a limited timeframe, to see if we can confirm that, that's, you know, that future with respect to our current zoning. In the long term, I would like to see a form-based code approach, but in the short term, I would like to see that the negative impact as we see across the street will not in fact ensue if we leave the zoning CB2 for the short term.
John, I understand what you're seeking here and it makes sense to me, but we have to acknowledge that we cannot tie the hands of any future council. If some developer or a property owner comes to the council and asks for rezoning to CB5 for part of the block, maybe a large part of the block, there's nothing we can do to constrain them, to tie their hands. So I understand your point about CB2 and wanting guidance about that, but there's this other part of it too.
In terms of a procedural clarification, if we were to vote no now and we did the consult with the planning and zoning, I haven't done one yet and I've been in council for two and a half years. So mechanically, how does that process work then? We go and consult with the P&amp;Z and then we could change your vote? If we can't agree, then we can change...
No, once you vote no, if there's a no vote on an ordinance, it's done.
Yeah, but we haven't voted and we're not...
But in terms of the consult with the planning and zoning?
Then we would come back and vote after the consult.
Yeah. That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
So just so everybody knows, if...
If there are two or more of you who are inclined to considering no vote, I guess I would say it that way, then we might as well have the consult with P&amp;Z.
Yeah, so...
And continue it for that reason as well as to get additional information.
I'll just say, I'm inclined to vote no at this point.
And also me.
And I think we need to have the consult with the P&amp;Z. Are we going to have a chance for any commentary though, or?
Yeah, there's nothing, we can't be, we're not constrained about having some discussion and so on right here. I know I have a question to ask Jeff as well. Yeah. All right, so I mean, I'm going to be clear about what I need to do. So I'll need to continue the public hearing. I'll need a motion to continue the public hearing, right?
Well...
Second.
But that's what I would need to do right now, yeah?
That's right, but if you want to have more discussion, I would go ahead and have that and then continue the public hearing.
Okay, do the, a little more discussion before. And I want to ask you a question Jeff, so if you don't mind. The question for you is, can you kind of give us a sense of where the form-based code light work stands and what's possible, what's not possible in relation to this site?
Yeah, the, so the council direction that we have on form-based code is to move forward with the implementation of a form-based code in the South District and to do some selective editing of the zoning code that exists, the traditional zoning code in the Northside, which would include the commercial Northside marketplace. What you're going to see with that is probably some fine tuning of some areas that the consultant sees as high risk in terms of the impact that redevelopment may have on the character of the neighborhood, but you're really not getting into what I'm hearing from some of the commenters tonight, which is a visioning process and really trying to rally everybody together around a larger picture. That's not what it's intended there. Where we're at specifically is in the, we're negotiating the scope with the consultant. That will ultimately have to come back to you. I don't have a timeframe for that frankly with our staffing situation and in the planning department right now, it's really not realistic for us to kick that project off in the next several months anyway. It's probably going to be later in the summer before we're even ready to begin work on that project.
And also, can you respond to John's suggestion?
Well, the consultation process, as I understand it, probably was not set up for a historic overlay. And Eleanor and Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I see the planning and zoning's review of this type of overlay as, you know, they're checking, they're checking to see whether it's complimentary of the comprehensive plan. So I think, you know, the code is set up to have that conversation with P&amp;Z. I think it may be more fruitful for council to include the Historic Preservation Commission on that because that's the body that really, that really vetted this. I think the P&amp;Z probably has some good insight, but in these particular cases, I think you're going to get more out of a three-way consultation, if you will. So you might want to consider that. That will be challenging from a scheduling standpoint, but I think you should have that discussion.
So we're required by law to consult with the Planning and Zoning Commission and we could offer to consult with the Historic Preservation Commission. Is that right? Yeah?
In terms of John's request to do an analysis and report back on the CB2, I think that's something we could do. We probably couldn't do it in the next two weeks given the other projects we're working on. It would take maybe a month to get that sort of work done.
Well, if we wanted to, we could defer for a month, you know, to the meeting on the 17th or whatever, 15th.
Yeah, you certainly can, that's...
Yeah.
And why are we deferring?
Well, two reasons. One is to offer a consultation with the Planning and Zoning Commission, which would be required by law, but also offer a consultation with the Historic Preservation Commission, which Jeff just suggested. Beyond that, deferring for a while would give us, each of us, an opportunity to reflect on what we have heard and kind of sort through it calmly and come into the next meeting with a real clear idea about how you want to vote. It's hard to do, hard to decide, you know, reading a few things and then hearing people talk. It's hard to make that decision quickly. All right, could I have, help me here, could I have a motion to defer, to continue the public hearing and defer our first vote to the 15th of March, to our meeting of April to May, to our formal meeting of the 15th of May? And also to offer a consultation with both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission that afternoon or at some mutually convenient time? Yeah. Is that a reasonable motion?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to that effect, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, second by Cole. This is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Can I, discussion, can I?
Discussion, sure, thank you.
So, I mean, I appreciate this, I mean, I'm always in favor of if we can take more time to discuss, especially a project or projects such as this. I would say though, that it behooves many council members that may not have been a part of council when the cottage discussion happened, to maybe go back to those minutes and, you know, spend some time kind of reviewing those because I think that a lot of conversation here changed, or is happening because we changed the process by which we wanted to be more proactive and how we designated certain buildings, that landmark designation. I would say I have some questions and so I am appreciating, you know, I guess, a stepping back, but, you know, I'm always weary or eerie of stepping back from processes sometimes and not stepping back from processes other times. I mean, it's, to me, it does become problematic and, you know, if there's other people that are, you know, and I guess we're talking specifically around historic landmark designations and what that means for particular properties, but I just, I'm leery of some of those situations, especially again since, you know, this is a part of our strategic plan. We've talked about wanting to focus on historic preservation and so, again, I'm all in favor of stepping back and taking more time because I do think it's an important topic and I do appreciate additional time to kind of talk with residents but also answer questions. But I would say I do have some concerns at stepping back, not necessarily following through a process that has led to some, you know, I would tell you, some stressful issues at times around landmark designations and how do we protect historic properties? So I just want to say that.
Yeah, to be clear, I mean, I agree with what you said about stressful situations, and especially in that context, but to be clear, given the fact that two people, two council members have also indicated that they are tentatively inclined not to support the designation, then that we are required, understand it, to offer a consult. Yeah.
And are we going to have a chance to comment or can I make a comment on that?
On what in particular?
Well, on the fact that I voted no and the reasons behind that.
Yeah, sure, I think so.
So I just want to briefly explain sort of where I'm coming at. You know, big picture nationally as well as locally, I think we live in a culture now where we get people in the room and we talk past one another and we don't listen to one another. I think what I hear is sort of classic Iowa City, which is everyone's being incredibly thoughtful, reasonable, engaging, incredibly articulate debate. And so I guess what I would like to do is, you know, I think I kept on hearing at this time, at this time, at this time. And for me, I guess I do trust these residents. I do trust both the proponents, I know a lot of the proponents for landmark and I know of, I've certainly eaten a lot of that good pizza, it's great stuff. And I really believe that we got to give that an opportunity because I think sometimes the best actions we do are where we set back and let the community proactively resolve these so they never even come before us. Now, whether that will be realistic or not is another matter, but I just see a process where because we're not at 11th hour, we do have some time and I think if we have that time, let's use it, I trust it, I think everyone's acting in good faith. Frankly, if we were in a situation where our backs were against the wall and the wrecking ball was about ready to swing, I would maybe have a different vote here, but we're not there. And so let's build upon that, engage in this consulting process and I'm hoping that we can continue this incredibly thoughtful, articulate Iowa City way that we need to cultivate. So that's sort of why I am at where I'm at at this point.
Okay, any further discussion?
Can I also say why I said no? Yeah. To me, this whole issue as a new council member about historic preservation, very new. I really don't know a lot about it. This is something being, I guess, passed and, you know, before I come here and, but I'm willing to learn more about this and considering, after I read and I did my homework, I swear God, and I went to Bob and have the book right here and just try to figure out, you know, to understand something, all the things about this. But, you know, I went, I just kind of like, look at all the building, the seven building and the surrounding for the seven building. And I went myself, I drove to that building and I start like going around to see like what's surrounding it. And yes, this one is really different from the seven because I see like there is a bar... I see like there is a parking lot on the west side, the south side. And I understand, as Bob said, this is the parking lot for the city especially, could be still a parking lot, but you know, city council king and the philosophy of the city council, like the point of view, the vision of each city council is different. I really don't know what's going to happen if this, you know, if somebody, another city council come, and I don't know, if still we're going to have the CB2 for like two, two, three building. That's why I think it is really premature to designate this property as a historic landmark. Before any such designation, there should be an evidence that the block itself will be developed in a manner that enhances the historic feature of the area. And I also, you know, have a concern, and I think the concern that has been raised by the owner is really acceptable, and they should carry weight to the, to us, all of us. I appreciate their desire to protect their initial investment in the property. Also, historic preservation is important, but it's not only the consideration in this block, because I think there is many factors we have, like, to think about it. I, you know, I really want to thank all, you know, the commission of doing like really tremendous and hard work that you did for all those. This is really beautiful. I like this building, and it looked awesome. It's supposed to be historic and everything, but you know, I'm just concerning about the area. That's why, you know, I guess, want to exercise my judgment at this time and say, you know.
Being clear, this is just kind of a tentative inclination. You're not voting right now.
I know, but you know, like, just need to vote to say, you know, so this can be deferred. That's why I just want to say, I wasn't knowing if I was going to say.
I want to make one comment. This is a land use decision. This is not about who owns the property, and I think you really need to focus on that. This deals with the context and all the things that have been talked about in terms of the Form-Based Code. That's all fair game, but I urge you to not focus on who owns the property. You don't do that in other land use situations, and you should not be doing it in this situation.
Right. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, which involves deferring, continuing the public hearing, deferring a first vote to the 15th of May and offering a consult with these two different commissions. Roll call, please.
Memes?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thurgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please? So moved?
Second.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by Memes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So that's what we're going to do with regard to that particular topic. Item 5I. Rezoning historic landmark designation 410 to 412 North Clinton Street. Ordinance rezoning property located at 410, 412 North Clinton Street from high-density multifamily residential RM44 to RM44 with a historic preservation overlay, RM44/OHPP. I'll open the public hearing.
This property is also located in the Central Planning District. It's currently zoned high-density multifamily residential, and it currently contains multiple dwellings. I believe that there are six dwellings in the front of the building, the original historic building, and six apartments in the addition on the back. I would point out that the property does include a nonhistoric addition that was put on sometime in the 1960s, and that the historic preservation guidelines would provide a lot of flexibility in how that back part of the property could be treated. It could be removed, it could be replaced with a new structure or a new addition. There would be some guidelines on how it would fit with the character of the historic building. The landmark designation would then therefore allow some flexibility on how the back part of the property could be used. Again, when reviewing this with the Planning and Zoning Commission, we found that preservation of this building does meet the goal of identifying and preserving historic properties, but also one of the goals of the Central District Plan, which is to preserve smaller apartments in a variety of housing stock, which this represents. Also, this is likely to be more affordable housing stock than a new construction that would possibly replace it if it is taken down.
Thank you, Bob.
This is one of our oldest houses tonight. It's across the street from Courier Dormitory, but when it was built, the university campus was no farther than the Pennacrest. It's another Italianate, dates back to 1865 and has considerable integrity. If you look at the doors, the windows, the brackets, the porches, porch, the heavy stone lintels and sills on the second floor, and also has shutters, which was fairly common at that time. It's also significant because of its association with prominent citizens. Point to the first owner I could, Dr. Milton Cochran, who was on the school board, went on to serve as a Civil War surgeon, then the first superintendent of the Soldiers' Orphans' Home in Davenport, statewide orphanage after the Civil War, then went on to serve as, at an Indian agency in Wisconsin. The next owners were Samuel and Priscilla Sharpless, a name we still remember. Samuel was the director of Johnson County Savings Bank and a member of the city council. Later on, by the Dennis family, specifically Gertrude, who was locally involved in arts and music. For all these reasons, this house deserves proactive designation. Plus, we have to tip our houses, hats, to houses that date this far back to the 1860s that continue to be called home by Iowa Cityans, whether they are owners or renters. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening. My name is, good evening, members of the city council. My name is Christopher Jones, and I'm an attorney here in Iowa City, and I represent the owner of 412 South Clinton Street, Mr. Robert Crane. I guess, but first thing I'd like to say is, the concept of making decisions in the absence of considering the people who are involved strikes me as a very cold way to make a decision. So I begin with that. I'd like to begin by saying that we're here to ask you to reject this proposal to designate this property as a historic landmark for three primary reasons. The first, first, let me also note that I believe that we, I had some photos that may have been passed around of some additional photos of the property that I urge you to take a look at. The first reason we ask you to vote no on this property is we believe this is a very different property from many of the homes that you have considered tonight. The second reason is the, we believe that the historic integrity of this property was significantly compromised in 1965 by a large addition that is attached to the back. And the third reason we would ask you to reject this proposal is because the historic landmark designate will damage the value of this property, most likely by hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it's an unfair tax for the city to impose that on Mr. Crane alone. First, a little background about this property. Mr. Crane purchased this property in 1980 as an investment property, where he has engaged in residential leasing activities since then. Most of his tenants are not students, despite the fact that this property is across the street from Courier Hall at the University of Iowa. Most of his tenants are low-income individuals. For almost 40 years, he's been providing quality housing to low-income people here in the city. There are three structures on this property. A detached garage in the back, there's the older home that you see in the front, and there's also an addition that, as I mentioned, was constructed in 1965 that is attached to the house on the rear. This rear addition is the largest structure and has the largest footprint on the property. Now, unlike most of the properties that you are considering tonight, which are mostly single-residence homes, this property, as was mentioned, is zoned RM44, high-density multifamily residential. This is the most dense zoning in the city of Iowa City, and properties with this zoning have significantly higher value. They have the highest value for residential properties, and they also have the highest income-producing potential. This particular property sits in a unique location across the street from the University of Iowa Courier Residence Hall. It's just a few blocks from the UI's main campus and the downtown district. It has a much higher value than all the other properties that you've considered tonight. The house has nine rooms, not six, that are inside the house. The interior of the house is used as a rooming house. They have shared kitchens and common areas. The rent for each of these rooms is $450 a month. The apartment building attached to the back, there are nine individual one-bedroom self-sufficient apartments. Each of those rent for $560 a month. This is well below the average rent of $822 for apartments in the city of Iowa City. Mr. Crane has provided individuals with limited means, affordable housing, in a very good location, just a few blocks from downtown Iowa City. It has excellent access to public transportation, the university, downtown shopping, and employment. We oppose the landmark designation, as we said, because this property has been compromised. As you can see from the photos, the primary structure on this property is not the home, it is the apartment building that is attached to the rear. And unlike other properties that you have considered, where the buyers knew that they were acquiring older homes, in this case, Mr. Crane purchased this property primarily for the structure in the back, which has absolutely no historic value, and I don't think anyone has suggested that the property on the back does have historic value. If this property is designated as a landmark, you will have to get Historic Preservation Commission approval before making any alterations to the back. Makes very little sense to impose that additional burden for a property that has no historic The third reason that we oppose a landmark designation is because this property will have a severe negative impact on Mr. Crane's property values. One of the city's stated goals for historic preservation is to stabilize and improve the property values in the neighborhood. With, in this particular case, this designation will impose a severe restriction on the property value. It will destroy possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars in property values. Now, I'd point out that Mr. Crane is a real estate professional. He's been a broker and an appraiser for close to 50 years of experience, and it is his opinion that this designation will lower his property value to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Given his experience, I think as a real estate professional, I would hold, suggest that that's a fairly credible assessment. We feel that this property unfairly places the entire financial burden of preserving this property on Mr. Crane and on Mr. Crane alone. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was some discussion about how the back could be detached and possibly an additional attachment or an improvement on the back could be made without damaging the structure. Well, Mr. Crane has owned this property for nearly 40 years and has left it unattached. He's 78 years old, and he doesn't have any present intentions to make any additional alterations. However, this historic designation will impact the property value, because it introduces risk and uncertainty that a new owner may not be willing to pay for. So regardless of whether a future owner intends to put something on the back or not, it will lower the value for Mr. Crane. And Mr. Crane feels that this will be, you know, a form of punishment to his property value, despite the fact that he's been providing this city with what it says it has wanted, which is low-income housing here in the community. So for these reasons, we would ask you to vote no. In addition, I have some additional protest, we have filed a protest of rezoning. Mr. Crane has received signatures from several additional property owners nearby who also oppose this designation, and I'll give those to the city clerk. So it's not just Mr. Crane who's opposing, but several of the other neighboring property owners have also indicated their objection to this as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, but I'll conclude that, and I think Mr. Crane wants to speak as well. Thank you.
Okay. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please? So moved?
Second.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by Memes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good evening.
I'm Bob Crane. I am the owner of the property. I am hard of hearing. Now, if I speak too loud, give me one of these. I'll back, I'll back away. I won't back off, but I'll back away. Chris did a nice job of analyzing what we have here as a property. Everything he says is true. There are some things I certainly don't understand and was shocked about in this process. There is such a thing in the real estate practice as bundle of rights and bundle of sticks of ownership. One of them is to rent, to manage, to find highest and best use, and nothing is ever said about a committee coming along and telling us, well, we would like to have this in our social group or our societal group so we can make it look nice and pretty. We don't really want to go too far, but we're going to have some things to say about taking care of the property. And that the costly procedure, I hope you all understand, I'm not going to ask the question of how many of you own rental property, but you know how costly it is when you try to match current construction or 50-year construction with the early, original 1865. That becomes very, very expensive. If that happens, Chris points out, you see, it's quite simple, really. Expenses go up, net income goes down. You capitalize net income by effective rate of return, you get whole value. When your return is less, you have lesser value. That's just a phenomenon of the market. That's the way business is, that's the way business works, and that's the way it should run, in my opinion. We've been very obedient regarding taxation over there. I have paid taxes, never been a day late, done all those things, but I didn't expect a foreign government or foreign committee to come in on what I do. I've kind of done it pretty well. I have treated people right. I am full, I'm proud of that. We have people there that are not up here where they might like to be, but they're simply limited for various reasons. We take care of them. We teach them something about getting along in that environment, and they can afford it. I can afford it. I'm reasonably well off, and I'm glad to do that. Now, this started with a notice about, well, we're going to invite you to participate with us in the restoration committee, and then we had a meeting with that committee. And I can tell you, not all of them were there. That surprised me to start with. If you're going to have a committee to make decisions, you better have them all there, if I was running. Then they passed it unanimously, just zip. That was it. Then we had the Planning and Zoning Committee, and we met with them, and the same net result. Not all of them were there. They passed it unanimous, all those were there, passed the suggestion, and I'm beginning to draw some conclusions about how these things operate, but that's neither here nor there. They passed it. Now, here we are in front of city council. You folks are responsible for, in this case, my property. I mean, here I am before you, and you're deciding whether this committee, Restoration, should move ahead and seize that property at their will. That doesn't seem right to me. It isn't right. I begin to think nasty thoughts like we, I mean, are we a socialist state? Is it true out there in rural Iowa, that Johnson County is a socialist county in the state, perhaps in the Midwest? Ah, we've got to think about it, because it's heading that way, in my opinion. If that offends somebody, I'm not sorry. We are a nation of individuals and strong individuals, and we got where we are because of that. And we also got that way because we treat people right. I don't care if it's tenants, if it's your neighbors, the other fellows you work with, or whatever, but we do not, like, some of us, the imposition of governmental factors. I'll move on here and again emphasize what Chris says. This property is just not a fit. I was offended at the planning and zoning- I was offended at the Planning and Zoning Committee because the gentleman, the guy here that puts this picture up, he had that picture up the whole night. The Planning and Zoning never saw the backside of this property like we've got there. That's what it really looks like. That's what you've got. Go down that alley, you've got a nine-plex and an old garage and parking and stuff and a dumpster. You don't have this. It's just not a fit. Think about that. I have a letter in my file from an architect that says, "Don't call this historical anything. It's a mix." And the mix happened in 1965. That's when the true Italiani architecture was destroyed in 1965. So we really don't want the restoration label on this property. Myself personally, you touched on this, and I'm not begging the issue, I'm 78 years old, my wife died nine years ago. I don't want to spend the rest of my life putting up with nasty requests about fix, "Oh, fix that trim, fix that trim, get that color right, this and that." No. I don't deserve that. I've made this work because I worked hard at it. And it can work, but it will not stand interference.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. Anyone else? I just said, "Thank you, Robert."
I want to make... I think Mr. Jones may have misconstrued my earlier comment. When I say it's a land use decision, that does not mean that you can't consider the fact that the property owner has objected.
Sure.
What you can't be doing is distinguishing between property owners. This one's trustful, this one's not trustful, this one's a good person, this one's not a good person, that kind of thing. But you certainly, obviously, the law recognizes that the objection of the property owner is significant.
Alicia Trimble, Friends of Historic Preservation, again. You guys are troopers, man. I don't know how you do this well into the night, like twice a month.
Hey, we just started.
I know. Again, I missed the P&amp;Z meeting for me for this one as well. I think some clarification needs to take place again. Historic designation will not make Mr. Crane do anything to this property besides the normal maintenance anyone has to do to a property. Nobody's going to pick his trim colors or his house colors or make him change his trim. And I applaud him for putting affordable housing in this area because that's a very rare thing. I'm a little confused by reading the minutes and being at the Historic Preservation Commission with this. His attorney at the first meeting, Mr. Sigafus, I agreed, who was his attorney at the HPC meeting, I apologize, I'm really tired, as I said, he said that the city needed to pay him the highest and best use, which in Iowa City translates to high-end student housing for this property because this was inverse condemnation, which the courts have said it isn't many a time. And then during P&amp;Z, affordable housing came up as an argument, but clearly, listening to the attorney tonight, Mr. Crane is providing very affordable housing. We know with the historic overlay, nothing will have to change about this property, and so I actually think this is a very good match for this property. And then, of course, there's always a beer truck scenario. What happens when the next person owns this property? So I would ask you to consider landmarking this property tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Anyone else? I'd like to ask you a particular question. What could the owner do with the addition in the rear?
We could continue to use it and rent it as is. It could be removed. It could be removed and replaced with a newer structure. If it is replaced, the Historic Preservation Commission would follow the Secretary of Interior standards in terms of having an addition that's compatible in character and scale with the building. That doesn't mean it would necessarily look historic, but it would have to be of similar color, height, so just general guidelines in that regard.
And the whole property is zoned RM 44?
That's correct.
Is that correct? So if the owner chose to demolish the addition, the owner could put up some other building that is consistent with RM 44 zoning.
That's correct.
Is that right? Yeah. So hypothetically, what could such a building be?
It could be an apartment building. It would likely be an apartment building because commercial is not allowed in this zone.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to get at... I don't know if you can answer this question, but I was trying to get at how many units could hypothetically somebody put in?
I couldn't answer that without a site plan or a concept into how you would accommodate the parking, but it could certainly be as many units that are there now and most likely more. And again, if this is designated as a landmark, there can be waivers or reductions in parking So again, I can't give you an exact answer.
Sure. Okay.
You'd mentioned the waiver of the parking requirement. It also include the density bonuses because it's landmarked as well?
Yeah, although if this building was removed, if both buildings were removed, it would probably be a much higher density than is there today. That would be controlled by the number of parking spaces that could be provided.
Any other questions for Bob or any of the other people who have spoken?
Bob, I just had a question about the address because it's 410 to 412, and on the later handout, we got the apartments in the back. On the railing, it says 410, so...
I believe that the original address is 410, and then the addition may be 412, but it goes by both addresses?
It's actually the other way around. It's the other way around?
412 is the original.
The original building, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for anybody else? Okay. So are you inclined to vote in accord with the Commission's recommendation, the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation? I can tell you, I am.
I'm not. I think there's even more questions on this property than there is on the last one in terms of what the impact of this designation would be with this addition and if changes needed to be made. I have a lot more questions I feel like I need to have answered in terms of how this designation would truly impact this overall property before I could possibly support it. And quite frankly, I tend to be more reluctant to support these when the property owners are not in support of them. I think that's very important, but I can't support this right now without more information.
I understand. How about the rest of you?
I am supportive.
I'm supportive.
Support.
I'm confused.
Say no.
Yeah, I'm going to say no. I mean, I don't... No. I don't see why this is... I can understand maybe the different articulation of the arguments to why this is different, but I'm confused why we treated the last property differently than we treated this one. I'd rather have a consultation as well. Well, I won't go into my reasons before, but I'd rather have a consultation as well.
I'm the same. I've always thought, when in doubt, no. Although it's a beautiful building, but I also don't see the difference between the last property and this one, and more inclined with this one to say no.
Okay. So that means we need to offer a consult. So why don't we do the same thing we did with the last? And I would request a motion to continue the public hearing, offer a consult with both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission, and defer first consideration to May 15.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, second by Sully. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So you understand what we're doing? We're deferring to May 15 because there's a legal requirement, given the way people are thinking about voting. So, yeah, you get it right. Yeah. All righty.
They need to give him time.
Thanks all for coming and, you know, going through this process. It's an important and good process. Those of you who are tired, naming no names, should go home and get some sleep. Joy?
Possibly to ask a question at this point or not?
No, no. Wrong timing, Joy. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, let's turn to item six, asphalt resurfacing U.S. Highway 1, Burlington Street and Governor Street, 2018. This is a resolution approving plans, specifications, form of agreement, and estimate of cost for the construction of the asphalt resurfacing U.S. Highway 1, Burlington Street and Governor Street, 2018 project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. Open the public hearing. Hi, Ron.
Good evening. Ron Kentucky, Public Works Director. With the plans and specs you'll be approving or offering consideration tonight, we'll include Governor Street and Burlington Street. From Johnson to Summit, we'll have a piece of Johnson Street, and that'll be all overlays. Meyer, Soccer Park Road, Napoleon Street, and Taft Avenue and Ridge will be chip seals. So those are the streets that are up for consideration with this set of plans. At our next council meeting, we'll have plans before you for the Riverside Drive and some patching on Burlington Street up to about Gilbert Street.
Ron, I'm tired too, but I didn't realize that much of Burlington Street was going to be resurfaced. So it's only like one block that's not going to be resurfaced?
So we have... So it's actually the area that's currently overlaid on Burlington Street is what's up for replacement. So it'll be from that Summit Street down to about where the Rawson Street Bridge is currently. So that area will be overlaid, be milled, and then infill. And then the area, we'll have some patching, some PC patching that'll be with the next project.
Okay. So, Ron, can you just explain the difference with what patching is?
Sure. Yeah, so a patching project is for the Portland cement, concrete streets, so the, you know, what we consider concrete, the white stuff. Those areas basically will be panel replacements and then removing those pothole areas that we have further down the hill. For the overlays with the hot mix asphalt, we'll mill off, we'll do base repair in areas that we need to, and then we'll continue with an overlay over top of that.
Yeah, okay. Any questions for Ron? I guess not. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address this? Yo, come on up.
Vern Swenson, A-1 South Gilbert. First of all, thank you for repaving those streets. I guess my main question is, I believe Governor is on the city bike plan. Is there any plan to strip a bike lane while that project is underway?
Good question. Ron?
The project will include bike lanes on both Governor Street and Dodge Street.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else want to address this? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Moved by MEMS, second by Botchway. Glad to see this. Anybody who drives north on Governor Street is probably going to be glad to see it.
You're going to be the most popular person in town.
There's a few more streets out there.
We'll let you answer phones for the...
I've been hearing about a few.
Okay. Any further discussion? Jokes? Commentary? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Item seven, Iowa City Housing Authority's Annual Plan for Fiscal Year 2018. This is a resolution adopting the Iowa City Housing Authority's Annual Plan for Fiscal Year 2018. Staff has requested that we defer this to May 1.
We need to open the public hearing first.
So I'm going to open the public hearing.
Now you can take your motion, assuming...
Yeah, well, maybe somebody wants to talk. Apparently not. Could I have a motion to continue public input to May 1? So moved?
Second.
Moved by Botchway, second by Sully. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we should have a motion to defer the resolution to... Could I have a motion to defer the resolution to May 1? So moved? Moved by MEMS, second by Botchway. Discussion. Non-voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight, $10,750,000 general obligation bonds. This is a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $10,750,000 in general obligation bonds. Open the public hearing. Hey, what brings you here?
Bonds.
Bonds.
Moving a little stiffly after sitting here for the last... So I'm going to address items eight through 12 tonight, and those all pertain to the issuance of the 2018 general obligation bonds. For items eight through 10, those are three public hearings. That'll be followed by a resolution with the intent to institute proceedings. Items 11 and 12 are two separate resolutions that will direct the advertisement and the sale of the GO bonds. In total, the bonds represent just under $12 million, and the projects that are being funded were developed through the five-year CIP process, which took place last fall and last winter. The largest project on that list, which is included in your packet, is $5 million for the completion of the Gateway Project and $3.1 million for the pedestrian mall reconstruction project, which is the first phase of the funding for that project. The sale date, the bond sale scheduled for May 1, and I will answer any of your questions if you have any.
Dennis, I had a question from a council member earlier. Could you just real briefly explain why we're breaking them up into three different categories here, the essential and general purpose?
Sure. Yeah, the category is based on the state law designation. So those are organized by our bond council based on whether they're an essential purpose, which is like a street, sidewalk, and there's a whole list in the state code versus the general purposes, such as a recreation, which has separate referendum requirements in the law. And so those have to be broken up and presented through separate public hearings because of the requirements within the state code.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dennis.
And you mean the... I'm sorry.
There's a question.
The first one is just the essential, right? The $10,750, it's just essential only, right?
Yeah, those are all essential purpose projects as defined in the state law.
Are you just talking about number eight right now, and you're going to come back?
No, I can if you'd like, but essentially, you could just hold each public hearing, close it, adopt the resolution, and move on through items eight through 12.
Oh, can I ask something, not number eight?
When we get to whatever the topic is you want to ask a question about, we can have Dennis come up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I can address any of your bond questions right now.
Oh, we'll do it now. Yeah. Go ahead.
Yes, you know, I understand the first one is $10,000. This is for the essential, and I understand that, you know, the second one will be, as you said, for the bark trailer and city hall for the, you know, is general, and the other one, 700, also, you know, general bond. But what is $8,895, you know?
Sure. There's separate actions that are taking place here. The public hearings are being conducted under state law, and so they're sorted by the purposes that are in the state code. Then the two following actions really put the bonds together in how they're going to be sold to the investors. And so for when those bonds are put out for selling to the investors, it's not necessarily by the state code designation. So they're all of the same bonds, the different actions are grouped together in different ways using the same project list.
And there is a reason of like dividing it like eight and three? Could it be five-five or three-two?
Well, you know, we kind of chose the separation of the 8.9 million and the 3 million. What we were trying to do is stay within the, under the bank qualification rules for the IRS. We found that over the last several years that bank qualification has brought out far more bidders. And so we tried to split that up, to take a small portion of the bonds, designate as taxable, and repay that in the short term, and take the bulk of the bonds and designate them as bank qualified, which would then be sold at longer term. And I guess the bottom line is, is we are trying to maximize, or should I say minimize, the interest cost on the bonds being sold.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. All right. Anyone else want to address this? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Botchway. Hearing non-roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 10, $700,000 general obligation bonds. This is a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation bonds. I'll open the public hearing. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by Taylor. Hearing non-roll call, please.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 11, 2018A GO Bonds Bidding Procedure. This is a resolution directing the advertisement for sale of $8,895,000 dollar amount subject to change, general obligation bonds, series 2018A, and approving electronic bidding procedures. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Botchway. Hearing non-roll call, please.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 13, Water Rate Increase. This is an ordinance amending Title III, entitled Finances, Taxation, and Fees; Chapter IV, entitled Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines, and Penalties; and Title 16, entitled Public Works; Chapter III, entitled City Utilities; Article A, entitled General Provisions; Section V, entitled Establishing City Utility Accounts: Deposits Required. This is pass and adopt. So moved?
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Botchway. Hearing non-roll call, please.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 14, Established Tiff District. This is an ordinance providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the 2017 amended Riverside Drive urban renewal area in the city of Iowa City, County of Johnson, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Iowa City, County of Johnson, Iowa City Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, rebates, grants, monies advanced to, and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with the Riverside Drive urban renewal plan. Could I have a motion to give second consideration, please?
Move second consideration.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Sully. Hearing non-roll call, please.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 15, Established Tiff District. This is an ordinance providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within that area added to the Foster Road urban renewal area in the city of Iowa City, Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Iowa City, County of Johnson, Iowa City Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, rebates, grants, monies advanced to, and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with the Foster Road urban renewal plan. This is second consideration.
Move second.
Go ahead. Go ahead now. Go ahead.
Move second consideration.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Sully. Discussion. Hearing non-roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 16, Ped Mall Commercial Use. This is an ordinance amending Title 10, entitled Public Ways and Property; Chapter 5, entitled City Plaza, to allow an association of downtown businesses to place a commercial structure on city plaza under limited circumstances for more than 45 days in 2018 and 2019. Could I have a motion for first consideration, please? So moved?
Second.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by MEMS. Hi, Simon.
Hello, good evening. Simon Andrew, Assistant to the City Manager. The Iowa City Downtown District has requested that two of the structures that they used during the Holiday Market last year be placed on the ped mall this year. Currently, under city code, city staff has the ability to administratively approve up to 45 days for commercial structures on the ped mall. They would like to have these structures out there from May through October. They'd be primarily used for programming, they would be available for retail uses. Betsy Potter from the Downtown District is here, and she'll come up and talk a little bit more about what they actually plan to use these for. The plan would be to have one on the chessboard near the playground, the library playground, and the other one just in front of the outdoor patio area for brothers, so near the pergola, near film scene up there. There is one error to correct in the memo that was in your packet. We did intend to take down the pergola the first week of the project this coming month, but when they got out there, the footings are a little more elaborate than they realized for that, so that will be staying up for a little bit longer. So the pop-up, the structure would be just to the east of that, ideally if this is approved. They do have plans and specifications into the Building Inspections Division, who's reviewing those for accessibility. There's a ramp and railings and things of that nature that they're reviewing currently. So with that, oh, and the code amendment before you just removes the 45-day limit for 2018 and 2019. So it's only during the construction project downtown, trying to encourage the Downtown District to help support retailers impacted by the construction project. So I'll turn that over to Betsy now, and she can talk to you about the details.
Hi, Betsy, admirable endurance.
This has been great. I'm Betsy Potter, I'm with the Iowa City Downtown District. I will just go over real quick what we're thinking of doing, and just some reminders of things that we've done in the past, just as like a refresher on that. So our main objectives with the pedestrian mall construction from the Downtown District is that we really want to make sure that we are continuing to drive traffic down the pedestrian mall, even with the construction over the next two years. And we know there will be some challenges with that, but we're ready to take that on with a lot of programming and activation. So a lot of our plans that we have in place are through activation. So we're bringing back the outdoor yoga, we're bringing back the outdoor ping pong, outdoor jenga, live music, we're hoping to have a game library, seating and shade. Our problem at this point is that Black Hawk Mini Park is going to be under construction, and in the past, that has been our activation space. So we are hoping that these structures kind of act as a location for all of this programming to exist. Otherwise, there's very few places in the pedestrian mall, at least for 2018, where you can provide the seating, the shade, activation space that isn't within the walkway. So that's, these are kind of our goals and missions. We really want to make sure that we are still driving pedestrian traffic, and they're not stopped by the construction fencing. So we know that these structures are very aesthetically pleasing, we heard that a lot this holiday season. And so we think that actually they will be, they'll pique people's interest, and it will encourage people to come down the pedestrian mall. So, you know, we learned a lot of things, as did everyone, in 2016. Sorry, that is just going to get cut off. With the Streetscape update, but some things that we really took away from the Washington Street project is that activation does work, especially in adjacent area to the area, to the construction zone, and that we brought a lot of people down just for programming elements, and they stuck around, they, you know, had a cup of coffee, they ate supper downtown. All of the activation elements that you see on the screen were something that we did during the Washington Street construction timeline, and it really drove people to use that space that may have not during the construction season. We also really learned a lot of lessons with public art, and we will be doing public art in the alleyways this time, not on the construction fencing. Also, what we learned is that we don't have to change up the programming every single week. If we keep it consistent, it actually encourages people to come down more frequently because they know what's going on. We don't have to spend all of our dollars marketing it constantly, but if you know that there's always outdoor yoga, you know there's always outdoor seating, that there's a game library, it will bring people down on a more consistent basis. And then also, if you're going to leave a place flexible and encourage community members to come down and use it, you need amenities. So there needs to be some sort of seating, there needs to be some sort of space to drive them to. So those are kind of our lessons from 2016. This is just an image, if you weren't able to see our pop-up shops. This is what, one of the images, we will only be placing, they'll be singular, so they were very modular in the way they were designed, so that is what one would look like. And as you can see, we did not just use them for retail, we used them for other elements. This was one of our program spaces over the holidays, so that's just an example that they're not just meant to be retail shops, we can use them for a variety of different uses. And then this is the rendering that Simon was talking about. So with this, we are actually adding on a deck space, and the deck is meant to be used as a stage. So we have no stage downtown this summer. And each one of these units would have a stage on the front to allow for live music, to allow for the Sunset Salsa happen on one of these. Bread Garden Market is one of our partners, and they will be doing their live at the market off of one of these decks. That's the intention here. We are hoping to put out the red chairs on these every single day to allow for additional seating, put up the red umbrellas again. The one in front of the library on the chessboard, we are working with the Iowa City Public Library to open it up and put chess games out there, so that if you really want to play the chess still, you'll have an opportunity to, you can check out chess boards from the library. They also are very interested in using this space for summer programming, to do a book sale out of, things like that. So we have a lot of different options with these pop-ups, if they are able to be there for a little bit longer, and to have multi-use in them. Does anyone have any questions about this rendering? No, it's pretty self-explanatory. This is the pop-up shop, this is the deck on the front there.
And that's a ramp going up on the side, is it?
Yep, this is the ramp right here, this is just to indicate the hand railings. And it's only seven inches off the ground, just as like a clarification there, so that's why there's no hand railings around the entire deck. But as recommended by the building inspection, we will probably put potted plants just to indicate where the elevation is. And then, like I explained, we were really fortunate last year to do the Prairie Box, and that had a lot of different options for programming, and we were able to put some bands on it a couple times. And so we know that this concept will work, and it will drive people to an area if you put live music on an informal stage, front porch type concept. So that's what we're hoping to do again. And like I said, we're working with the Bread Garden for the live music on Saturday nights. Sunset Salsa is hoping to operate off of one of these. We will hopefully have a whole bunch of pop-up performers that we will help schedule. And then in the meantime, like I said, we're hoping to partner with the Children's Museum again, the Public Library, other organizations to use these units as they wish. And these are our current partners that we're just looking to partner with again this summer. We've partnered with them every single summer. So that's pretty much all I have, I'm happy to answer questions.
All right. Looks like a good idea to me.
Yeah. I don't have question, but I really, that will be really exciting, and especially while the ped mall are, like, there is a construction going on there, and people will assume nothing going on there, because if you want to come and see construction, but if this kind of programs is like operating there, the people are still going to come, because they will know that. It's just certain part of the ped mall is construction, and there is still an area that, you know, people can still use, yeah, it's exciting.
Hopefully. Okay.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thanks.
And thank you, Simon. All right, so any discussion? Do we have a motion on the floor already, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so no further discussion?
No.
No? Okay, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 17, Board of Adjustment Alternate. This is an ordinance amending Title 14 Zoning Code, Chapter 7 Administration, Article A Administration, Section 2 Board of Adjustment, to provide for an alternate temporary appointment appointment when a board member is unable to participate in an appeal due to a conflict of interest. Could I have a motion for first consideration, please? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, second by Sully. Discussion. Well, let's just note that this is a response to the controversy over the, quote, Kinnick House on Lusk Avenue, and when we had our lengthy discussion with the... With us, with Manville Heights neighbors, are considered topics that they had raised for us. We looked into this and identified this as something we wanted to do. So I'm very pleased that we're able to respond to it. I don't know, Eleanor, I guess your staff was involved in drafting this, right? Thank you so much for doing that. Any discussion among our council people?
I think it's a very good idea, and a good idea to look back at former members, to have them be that alternative, if they're willing.
Yeah. Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Could I have a roll call, please?
Todd Morton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 18, Taxicabs Soft Taximeters?
Taximeters.
Ordinance amending Title Five, entitled Business and License Regulations, Chapter Two, entitled Taxicabs, to allow for soft taximeters, taxemeters, and for taxicab business licenses to be sold. Could I have a motion for first consideration, please? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, second by MEMS. Does anybody want to... Does any staff member want to say anything about this?
This was just... We'd gotten a request from one of our existing taxicab companies for the ability to be able to sell an existing taxicab license, and then also the ability to be able to use soft meters or E-meters as well as the mechanical meters, just an option.
Okay. Good. And this will...
You mean, this is not going to... Like, if this is an additional option to what they have, we're not changing what they have right now.
Correct. Correct.
So in a sense, it helps level the playing field for taxicabs relative to T... What are they called? TLCs?
TNCs.
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 All right. We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
Whatever we can do to help our taxicab companies.
Yes. Help our taxicabs.
All right. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 19, Council Appointments. So we have in the... For the Telecommunications Commission, there's one vacancy to fill a three-year term, and we have one application from James Pierce. There are no gender requirements for this because it's been open for over a year. So James Pierce is a, what, a 24-year-old student who's lived in the city for about a year, and he presents, I think, a pretty good rationale for wanting to be on this particular commission. I see no reason not to appoint him.
He seems to have an understanding of what it's all about.
Yeah. All right. So I think we need a motion to appoint James Pierce to the Telecommunications Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sully, second by Botchway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I'd like to say I also really like the table that provides information about the current members. My sense is that it really helps me, at least, think about the diversity, various kinds of diversity of our existing members, and helps make appointments. All right. Let's see. I need to announce some vacancies. So to do that, y'all can take a nap for a while. Item 20, Announcement of Vacancies. We have two vacancies to fill four-year terms on the Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission at Large, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for College Green, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for Woodlawn, the Woodlawn District, three vacancies to fill three-year... To fill three-year terms on the Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Human Rights Commission, two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Telecommunications Commission. Applications for these positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 8, 2018, and of course, applicants must reside in Iowa City, be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We also have two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, and one vacancy for Jefferson Street Representative on the Historic Preservation Commission. Those vacancies will remain open until filled. Ben R. Gustaf, if we turn to item 21, would you... Either one of you like to say something?
Good evening. This is my last city council meeting.
Oh, no.
Ain't so.
Well, so I just wanted to do a quick recap of kind of like, you know, where I've been, and so let's get right off. I've seen, you know, council serve as a quasi-judicial board, seen young students recognized for their own leadership, which, you know, gives us all great pleasure and hope for the future. We've seen the council's character personally attacked in public hearings. We've been given digital tours of Iowa City's historic houses, a crash course in late 19th century architectural history. We've been lamenting the mistakes our community has made in the past, but we've also publicly set forth a vision for where our community should go, and that's only what happened today, let alone the other two years that I've been here.
You looked back really far, didn't you?
Well, I was... It was 9:30 when we were talking, still talking about, you know, historical preservation. I was thinking, by the time this meeting's over, I'm going to be up for historical preservation. But no, in all seriousness, though, the two years that I've been here, I think they've been very productive in terms of collaborating from the student body and also the university with the city. We've been able to promote greater housing supply in the downtown, promoting our community in a fashion that is holistic for all community members involved. There have been mistakes that have been made, notably, I'm thinking, the Rose Oak situation. But we've been making sure that as we move forward with these conversations, we're cognizant of every single demographic that is involved, including students, including low-income community members, including high-income community members. And from the general perspective that I've been given from, you know, Jacob Simpson, and then his predecessor Nikki before him, so on and so forth, and even from my own conversations with you all, that this sort of collaboration isn't historically the norm, that this sort of collaboration, it's a novel idea. But I think we've seen great success in terms of what we've achieved moving forward. And I think a lot of the conversation earlier today kind of, you know, can coalesce into like this one moment of, you know, Mr. Graff, who owned 319 East Bloomington Street, he didn't... When he moved into that house, he didn't even bother to think of like the historic moment that his actions were doing when, you know, he was brewing beer, trying to make money and have a fun time. But nonetheless, we're here 150 years later, talking about trying to preserve his legacy. And I think to put Mr. Tyson's words a little bit more eloquently is that in the here and now, as we act, we have an opportunity to pave history for the next 150 years. And I think we need to have the courage to hop on that, to make the tough decisions so that, you know, 150 years from now, we can look back and think of like the success of this administration, of these city councilors, of these politicians. I think if we shy away from that, or if we're not bold enough, then I don't... Things certainly won't go the way that we want them to in the here and now. But with that said, I've appreciated my time working with you all. I hope that you continue to reach out to Gustaf, to Gustaf's successor, and to their successor. Because the student voice matters ultimately at the end of the day. Every single packet that you have, the old Capitol building is right on the logo. Iowa City at its core is the university, which has since it's developed, has a million other beautiful layers on top of it. But fundamentally, the university is what makes Iowa City unique, and I don't think that vision can be overlooked. So that's all I have for you all. I'll be around for the next year or so, probably longer. So I'll see you around.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Bravo. Well done, Ben.
Bravo.
I'd like to say you've done a superb job as liaison for the student... For UISG to the council, and you've followed in the footsteps of a long train now of people who've done superb jobs. So, Gustaf.
The cow.
The bar's pretty high, and I'm sure you'll be able to leap over it and do really well. But great job, Ben. What are you going to be doing for the next year?
I'll see.
All right. Item 22, City Council Information. Maybe we can start with Susan and move to the right.
I have nothing.
Brings this to you, Pauline.
Well, just a few things. Reminder that this Sunday, April 22nd, is Earth Day, and I saw in some of the information we got that the Landfill and Recycling Center has an open house from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. So people should be welcome to come to that. Don't want to step on Jeff's toes, but attended the event at Merge today with the unveiling of the logo for RagBri. It was very exciting, well-attended. You can speak a little more to that if you want when it comes to your turn, but that was really fun. And Friday, April 27th, at the Iowa City Public Library at 12:30, is the annual Iowa City Federation Labor Workers Memorial. Every year, they list a number of people, workers, that have been killed on the job, and it's always very shocking to hear the number of folks that are killed on the job. So it's one way to memorialize them and try to struggle for a safe workplace and workplace environment. Oh, attended the groundbreaking for the Cross Park. I think a lot of us were there. That was exciting, and congrats to Chrissy on that and the others that supported that. That's all.
Good list. A brief free medical clinic, free medical and dental clinic fundraiser, 5:00 PM this Friday. I missed something, but... Oh, water treatment pant tour coming up. It better be good. I'm excited.
Waste water.
Waste water, yeah. What did I say?
Water.
I think you said water. Water?
Get the right kind.
Different type of water.
Two different ends of the pipe.
Man, this is really interesting. I'm not sure I wouldn't... Okay. I appreciate the change. It is right on my notes, though, so that's good. Mac Madness, it's a... I'll be participating in it, I think, as a judge, I hope as a judge. It occurs at Urban Acres on Saturday, the 28th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. It's for the animal shelter, fundraiser for the animal shelter, and it's different macaroni and cheese from different businesses. Had a blast last time, and so we'll see what happens this time. That's it.
I really don't have anything. I just feel I'm busy, but I don't know, like, things that I can report right now. But the only thing that I want to ask, there is an opportunity for a TV channel to come and record something about like my life story, and they would like to come and like, you know, record while I'm in the city council meeting. Is that something that we cannot do it? So they asked me if that's something possible, and I... Maybe on the 15th of May, city council meeting.
Who would be doing it?
It called Al Hurra Channel from Washington, DC. They're coming from Washington, DC, and they just want to interview me, and they want to also record while I'm in doing a council meeting.
Reason why you shouldn't do it, yeah.
Okay, yeah, but...
Press stuff a little bit, because I'm sitting right next to you.
Yeah, that's will be on the 15th. Yeah, 15th of May.
Good deal. Barack.
Well, I was briefly talking about two events of this past week. On Sunday afternoon, there was a STEAM festival at a Terry True Blood, and I mean, I'm telling you, it was awesome. It had 4H, it had Backyard Abundance, City of Iowa City, University of Iowa, and it's to get kids interested in science, and it was packed. And I think the city was the one that actually organized it, but it seems like there was a lot of players. So who gets the... Who is the leader of that? Parks and Recreation. Parks and Rec. It was awesome. So if you ever get to do that again in the future, please do, and it was packed. Bookmobile, can't say enough great things about it. On Friday, last week, actually, Johnson County, and this is a little bit off my radar, it celebrated Muslim Awareness Week, and I guess that there was some University of Iowa students that had had that, and the Johnson County Board of Supervisors had done a proclamation. And so as part of that, Hussein, one of the leaders of the community, they had an event on Friday night at Robert A. Lee. We didn't have as many... A bigger turnout as we had hoped. We had a nice, really good discussion, and so we had a little exchange. It was probably about 15 hearty souls, and we had a really good discussion, and it was very productive. And I think as much as we lamented what's going on, and other parts of the country are really thankful, the progress we've made here and the collaborative relationship that we've developed, and I think, you know, everyone has really had a lot of gratitude for that. So kudos to the organizers of that event as well.
I will be attending, and I think Jim may be as well, April 28th, a week from Saturday, Horseman Fair. Not going to mention what I'm going to be doing at the fair, but you can come.
Dunk tank. I'm going to dunk you, too.
I'm sure it's not dunking into a snow pail, or I know.
I'm not doing it.
The secret is out.
Dunk tank? Ah! What day is that? I got my calendar.
Put it on your calendar, Kingsley.
Is it Wednesday?
Saturday, a week from Saturday.
What time?
I'm not going to tell you.
Standing up there all... I'll get you that info, Kingsley. Fun... Is it fundraising?
Yeah.
All right. A lot of money. Let's go. Let's get it all out. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. I have long rest to read, so I'm not going to read any of it except for one thing. On the 9th of April, Jody Matherly, our police chief, and others did a really terrific[1645.33]